Is this to print this, right? Um. Yeah. I updated these.
Okay.
Because they sent us, PJ Heating sent us updated lists today.
Okay. All right. Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Lunenburg Select Board. Today is Tuesday, June 11th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel, on Facebook Live on the Public Access Facebook page, and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel after the meeting. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. We're going to begin tonight with public comment. Are there any public comments from the Board?
I'll go first, I guess. Um, yes, so perhaps not surprising to anyone who watched last week's Select Board meeting, I did a lot of thinking this past week since that meeting about the town and this Board. And included questioning the value I bring to this Board and whether it is the best way for me to spend my time and energy to help move the town in a positive direction. After town election, I made a list of things in town that I felt needed to be addressed. These were things that could be improved, gaps, and even things that many would consider really broken. They range from really easy things, you could call them low-hanging fruit, to much bigger things that would require a lot more time to address. And I expect that my fellow Board members have also thought about the needs of the town and made their own list. So I started writing my list on a Post-it note. Yes, I brought props. Well, this wasn't enough. This is now my list, and it's still growing. Last week, I added two more things. We don't have a personnel committee. Town manager announced her resignation. And I expect it to continue to grow. So just to state the obvious, for those who have been hibernating for the past six months, there are issues in town. And I'm not bringing this up to paint a picture of doom and gloom, the sky is falling. I just want to be honest and say, we need to do better. And, and we can, but it's going to take a, I'll censor myself, lot of work. So anyone who knows me knows I tend to be a glass is half-empty kind of person. I've tried to be the glass is half-full person. It's not in my DNA. But the thing is, even though I see the glass is half-empty, I don't just throw my hands up in the air and say, well, things are a mess. What can we do? Let's just quit, give up. No. No, when I see things, when I see there's a problem, I'm committed to finding a solution or improving things, even if it's out of my control, at least bring ideas and options forward to get things better. And that was actually the motivation behind my deciding to run for this Board last year. And I think this past year I've demonstrated my commitment to this position and the amount of work I'm willing to do to understand and address matters that become before this Board. Members of this Board will need to maintain a very high level of commitment and effort this coming year in order to address the issues we're facing. So at the end of the day, where I landed was, I am committed to being a contributing member of this Board as long as I feel that it is in the best use of my energy and effort to accomplish my goal to help address the issues in town and ideally shorten this list. And, and I hope the rest of the Board is equally committed as we begin this, this new, new year. Thank you.
I will start by, before I read my statement, I will start by, last week I forgot to acknowledge and applaud all the graduates of Lunenburg High School, the class of 2024. Many of us were at the ceremony. It was a perfect day, and I want to congratulate everybody for their accomplishments and wish all the graduates the best of luck in their futures, whatever that future might hold. I also want to thank the police and fire for their memorial. Unfortunately, I had a prior commitment that morning, so I could not attend, but any time that I am available, I do go, and it's a very moving, very moving memorial. I did watch the video, so. That being said, um, so at some point in your life, you realize that, that time becomes a very precious commodity, and what you choose to spend that currency on becomes more and more important, and you have to be able to justify it to yourself about why you're spending the time on that. It doesn't matter what the effort is, whether it's personal or career or in municipal in this case. When the time that you put in, you feel is not productive because of what I would characterize as a misalignment of priorities, a misalignment of the role of the group that you're a part of, a misalignment in teamwork, both of those words individually and together, a misalignment in the workload, a misalignment in the decision-making process, a misalignment in the gravitas of the situation before you, and then probably most important, just a misalignment in the trust of the people that you are tasked to work with. That is the position I find myself in, making, this past week, evaluating and weighing that balance. I want to be clear so that no one has any mistake of where this is. This is not about the Chair. It is not about holding the Chair, and it is not about being able to disagree with people. I've been doing this for 20 some odd years, and I've had all of those before, but this goes deeper than that. I think it goes to real foundational principles. The first, that very face, when we talk about the role of this Board, would be identifying and fixing problems as the executive body. So we have that, you know, we are the executive elected body under which the town manager and the rest of the town operates. Obviously, there are other Boards and committees elected and appointed that have roles as well, so we don't, we're not obviously ruling over everything. But identifying and fixing problems, and I don't have a yellow piece of paper like my colleague has, but I could use hers, like that should be what we are, should be doing. And I haven't seen that being done. There are major, major chasms that have grown over the past months or years that have not been addressed. I think that the responsibility of everybody would be to understand the basic principles of how the government works at every level, both financial and administrative, and knowing how they work and knowing what the function of each of those are, to building strategies to secure the future of the town. I have not seen us addressing those, and in times that require bringing people together, I have too often seen people divide people. So while all that weighing over the past week, of course, it is no surprise that the thought of resigning did come to mind. I was very lucky in the fact that many, many people reached out to me, people that I knew, but some people who I have never heard of. I don't know who they are, and they sent me emails saying, we understand how you probably feel, even though they had not spoken to me, but they reminded me that, that they felt that I had an important role to play with my experience and that they urged me to stay, although they certainly, almost to a person, understood if I did not. I have taken that to heart, and I have really evaluated that over the past week. And I realized that my commitment to the voters and their commitment to me in voting me in this is stronger than the time and the misalignment, certainly at this particular time at least. And I will continue to stay on, even if to be a minority voice and voice a different opinion than what the majority of the Board might decide to do. But more importantly, I continue, I will continue to fight for the best interests of the town and work to secure its future in whatever way I can. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
No.
All right. Are there any public comments from the public? Mr. Passios.
Dave Passios, 56 Whiting Street. I had promised that I'd have further comment in regards to my comments a week ago. I have no further comments. I think I said what needed to be said that evening in regards to that subject. I have a different subject I'd like to bring before you very quickly. Later in your agenda, you're going to be talking about ARPA funding that is now out there floating unappropriated again, and you had some money left over, I believe. As a past member of the Capital Planning Committee, presently seated on the Finance Committee, I'm not speaking for either one of those committees, but I'm speaking from my heart and my knowledge of where we are with many, many, many projects that need to get done or at least get the first phase done. And I went through a spreadsheet that was produced a couple of years, a year or so ago that takes us out to 2034 on capital projects. And I looked at the first three years roughly of those projects, and I looked for small dollar amounts that could help us move forward with things that we need to do before they get out of hand and cost us thousands and thousands of dollars and little projects that could do the first step of a, of a bigger project. And I do understand that you've got to be on board with the bigger project before you spend a lot of money on engineering or planning or whatever. But I'll just run down the list very quickly. I didn't cover all departments. I did have a conversation with both the Facilities Director on the town side and the DPW Director today so that they knew what I was going to say this evening. So these are the projects that I picked off the list, and they're just suggestions, but they're small dollar amounts and the stuff that needs to be done. Top of my list, teen center flooring replacement, especially second floor. I graduated in '72. Our 60th was two years ago. We toured that building and the floor was atrocious in there, especially the carpeting going up the stairs. That still hasn't been done. $35,000. DPW garage, partial roof repair, $65,000. The corner of the building over the office area where the DPW Director is and the office area, the facade and the blockwork coming down on that corner, the paint's all peeling off because the roof is deteriorated to the point where the water's getting to the wall. That's thousands of dollars just waiting to happen if we sit on that for another, anywhere from two to five years. So for $65,000 roughly, we repair that roof and we protect that building. Townwide tree, townwide tree inventory. We had expensive, extensive discussion about that during the Finance Committee public hearing, I believe it was, or at least a DPW presentation. Our present list is seven years old. It needs to be updated. For $50,000, we can have that updated and then use our budgeted money wisely and manage our trees on our roads. Finally, I've got the DPW garage floor repairs at $60,000. Again, another item that the more you let it deteriorate, the more it's going to cost to repair it. These are suggestions. I have no power to force you to even go in that direction, but I implore you to at least consider it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Passios. Are there any other public comments this evening? Mrs. Lockwood.
Good evening. Anna Lockwood, 91 Main Street. This evening, you have the opportunity to appoint three people to the Historical Commission. I have been to a few of their, two of their meetings most recently, and I asked them if they could start recording their meetings for the sake of transparency, know what's going on. They do touch a lot of things that are related to the town and town development. So as you take the opportunity to appoint these, the majority of the members to the Historical Commission, you know, ask them at least what the plans, plans are for recording meetings. That's an important part of our town government. Meetings recorded allow for transparency, public participation, and, you know, it's just much easier for us. So that's my public comment, if we could, you know, compel or ask at least the Historical Commission to going forward, record their meetings, it's the majority of their members to that. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Mrs. Lincoln.
Debbie Lincoln, 46 Hemlock Drive. I'm actually here for the Council on Aging, and Caesar attended our meeting this morning. I want to say thank you to him. It was great to see him there. These are our plans for our parking lot. 2010 never happened, but I was in contact with an architect engineer today who said that these are useful and for maybe $10,000 more, $10,000 to $12,000 more, maybe less, we could get these updated and they would be what we need to get them in the next Capital Plan. That's why we are at the bottom of the list of the Capital Plan for this year. So I am imploring you, please let me know what we need to do to get on the ARPA funds, to get these updated. I tried to get an application. I don't know how to do that. If you can contact me and let me know how to do that. But these are completely, they're all the drainage, they're everything that needs to be done. It's the changes that we now have a backyard. The parking lot was going to be in the backyard. Now it's going to be on the side, but these are extremely useful, and it seems that they've gone to waste, and now we can reawaken them, use the 15 grand that was set aside to do these and put them to use again. So ARPA funds would be great. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Lincoln. Any other public comments from the public? All right. Moving on to announcements. Are there any announcements this evening? Communications from other Boards? All right. So we'll move into appointments. Up first is a 7:15 PM appointment, presentation from BSC Group on conceptual redevelopment plans for 925 Massachusetts Avenue, which is the old gas station. So I'd like to represent, invite the representatives from BSC Group up to make their presentation on the work that they've been doing.
Mr. Chair, I am conflicted from this presentation, so I will step aside.
Okay.
I'd just like to make a brief introduction.
Sure.
So with us tonight are Jeff Bag and Heather Golds from BSC Group. Also with us in the audience is Amanda Gregor from, from Mass Development. As the Board knows, I applied for a grant through Mass Development last year, the Real Estate Technical Assistance Program, which we received, and through Mass Development, they hired BSC Group to provide conceptual plans for 925 Mass Ave as well as a draft RFP so we can put this project out to, to bid for the next, to revitalize the property and develop it for its next stage. So with no further ado, I'll hand it over to Jeff.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks for having us. I'm Jeff Bag. I'm a senior planner at BSC. I'm here with Heather Golds. She's the director of planning. Are you able to see the presentation at all, or?
I mean, I'll share that right now.
Okay. No problem. Great. So as the town manager mentioned, we were, we were looking at the property at 925 Mass Ave, the former gas station. There's an image up on the screen. And before we get into it, I did provide a cover letter to the, to the Select Board with the draft RFP attached, so you should have access to the more detailed information. This is, this is a higher level overview of our project. It was a Real Estate Technical Assistance Grants, grant through Mass Development, and their purpose is to help towns explore properties such as this and find out the issues and the opportunities and come up with a plan to help the, help the town bring those properties back on the tax rolls, specifically in this case. Over the past couple of months, we did a site visit. We met with several town officials, and we did present the preliminary conceptual designs to the planning board. And then in the next couple of weeks, we'll be putting together a final report, which will have detailed information and appendices and information that will be available for the town to use moving forward. The way that a project like this starts is we do look at the site constraints. It's really important for everybody to go in understanding, you know, the elements of a, of a property and explore them a little bit and then try to work through solutions. So a couple of them may be obvious to people, but it's a very small parcel, so it's, it's 8,276 square feet in size, and so that's a relatively small parcel, and it's located at the sort of the edge of the Village Center zoning district. And then the building that exists today is about 2,180 square feet. That's a footprint. Parking onsite in the future may be limited, so that may be one of the limiting factors that will have to be addressed moving forward. I am saying here, fortunately, the zoning bylaw does allow for shared parking. It's a formal arrangement that would have to occur, but it does allow for some potential future use to share parking with adjacent properties. And I will say from my experience, not every town's zoning allows that, so that's a, that's a good thing. The Village Center zoning does allow for the renovation of the building, and that will open up certain uses. You know, the zoning does allow for restaurant, cafe-style use or small retail or small office space. And then one of the, one of the constraints, you know, it could be a benefit, but it depends on how you look at it. New construction in this zoning district has to be at least two stories, and it has to be mixed use. So it dictates that the first floor of a new building would have to be commercial of some sort, and the second story would either have to be commercial, which is a little trickier, or some type of residential. So given the small site and the parking requirements, that actually is, that could be a constraint moving forward. Then looking at the environmental condition of the property, you know, the former use as a, as a gas station, this is a, this is a common occurrence throughout Massachusetts. There are some, there are some issues with the soil, but, you know, through the work of the town and grants funded by the EPA, there has been significant amount of remediation done. The removal of the underground storage tanks, some of the system, the floor drain systems in the building and the gas pumps have all been removed through permits and with funding from, from EPA. And there is some ongoing groundwater monitoring that will occur through 2024. And then relatedly with the building, the exact condition of the building is not, is not known, so there is a tendency, a preference that was expressed certainly by the planning board, to aim for reusing the building. But at, at this point, the condition of the building is not known, so it's not really clear whether the building can be renovated. But through the efforts of the town manager, there is a, a building evaluation underway, sort of soon to be underway. So that's like a structural engineer could, could visit the site and determine whether, whether it's feasible for the building to be renovated, and that's going to be really important information. So again, some of the opportunities, the, the fact that the town owns the property is a, is an actual real opportunity in this case, where you have some control over the future use through, through the formal process called disposition. So you own the property. Through this process, you can, you can seek someone to purchase it and redevelop it, and you have some control over how that, how that works and the types of uses that might be desirable for the town. So that's, that's different than a private developer who owns a private piece of parcel, you know, private parcel they can pick and choose as they, as they wish. The town has some ability to, to work with, with, work with that. Again, the other opportunity is right now, the support from the EPA and efforts to remediate, you know, put the, put the town in a better position to, to seek a developer to acquire the property. And then the town is going through a master plan process, a community-driven, you know, effort to talk to people about what they want to see and what they support in town. And so the pie chart on the right here is, it's from the recent survey where 80% of the people who participated really want the town to encourage small businesses. And the other, the report will have a little bit more information, but the other survey response is that residents are seemingly very supportive of trying to create additional space for restaurants or cafes and small businesses. So that's a, that's a high priority for the residents, and that could serve this property What we did with some of the information that was provided by the town, the town has an existing conditions land survey, which is very valuable information. Our team at BSC has landscape architects, so they, they looked at the property, they looked at the survey, and they helped, they're helping imagine what the site could look like. In this case, option one is if the site were renovated, so if the building was able to be renovated, that's shown in the gray box, the site could provide, you know, several parking spaces, handicapped accessible parking spaces, some area for, for a dumpster, you know, screen dumpster. And then on the image left, we're showing, you know, an area for landscaping and a privacy fence for that abutting property owner. And then in the front, you know, there's an opportunity potentially for a small patio or rain garden, you know, those are stormwater standards that would have to be, that would be met by a development. And then in both this scenario and the next scenario, there is a, you know, envisioning a sidewalk being constructed along the side of Mass Ave. It would, it would likely involve Mass DOT. It's a Mass DOT roadway, but that would be something that would be really beneficial and complement work on this property. And this plan, you know, the asterisk at the bottom is really to demonstrate that soon the town should have some information whether the building is able to be renovated. A couple precedent examples that we think are really important to show. The top images are in Pepperell, a former service station converted to a small cafe bakery. And then the image on the bottom is a similar former use converted to a cafe, Bakery 32, I believe it's called, in Hardwick. And so I am making a note that we didn't examine in detail what went into these properties, but it does show the potential viability of looking at reuses. Then moving into sort of a new construction, you know, it is really important for the town to, to understand that this, this may be an important option. If the building is not salvageable, then this would be sort of the next possible opportunity would be to construct a new building on the site, generally looking at the, the right side of the property, where the existing building is and where the service station was, and providing parking on the left side. The, you know, the, the graphic shows the same ability to have screening on the left, so vegetation, so plantings, landscaping, and then a privacy fence. So it has many of the same features as the other image. This building is about 2,300 square feet, so it's slightly larger than the existing building. And then the bullets show that the zoning requires that it be a minimum of two stories. It could be up to three. And then the shared parking would be relevant, because as you build a bigger building, you will require additional parking spaces. So that starts to demonstrate the constraint of the site. Luckily, the property is adjacent to what we call a lot of parking. It would require some kind of formal agreements, but there is a lot of parking nearby. And what the graphics here are just intended to show a couple of examples. There are some constraints building a small building. There are not a lot of small buildings mixed-use getting built. A developer does have to make sure that the return on the investment will happen, and the numbers have to pencil out and all these things. So we will still be searching for sort of another precedent example. There are a couple out there in Massachusetts, but the graphics weren't as good, so we'll work on that. But the image on the top, the three-story building is sort of a classic mixed-use building. It's three stories, which is allowed by your zoning, but it may not ultimately be compatible with the neighborhood. The two-story building on the bottom is in East Hampton, and it actually represents a renovated existing building, but it does show what it would look like to have some kind of commercial on the first floor. And that example there is six apartments, which could be potentially oversized for the property, but we want to try to provide some example of what a new building would look like. So the report will be, have more detail on those elements. But then what we look at here is the request for proposals, so the RFP. It's the formal method for a municipality to sell a property. The process to create and release the RFP is regulated by Mass General Law, it's chapter 30B. And so there's a lot of information available on that regardless of how, there are certain steps the town must take to do this. And then Mass Development actually has a guidance manual, a toolkit, that's pretty new, and does go over a lot of important elements for municipalities to do while they're going through the RFP process, and I would say that the town has done a lot. So the fact that you're going through the master plan and you're getting community input on the types of uses that people would like to see in the Village Center, it's very informative. And it belongs in the RFP to help guide how it gets released and what type of development proposal you might see. So this slide has some information on it, but the RFP will seek information, and then it'll provide information. So the information it seeks from anyone bidding on the property would be the developer's experience. It would request they provide conceptual designs that would be crafted by a civil engineer or an architect's team to refine. The examples that we have are really just examples. The proposer would really need to come in with more detailed information. There would be a preliminary development budget and a schedule. And then what the town provides and what we have sort of in the draft RFP is a summary of the location and description of the property, the basic zoning requirements, the permitting that would be required. And then any due diligence that the town has and can provide, provides clarity for a person looking at this property. And any time that the town can eliminate uncertainty, it's going to be beneficial. So things like understanding, having a structural engineer go into the building and take a look, that's super valuable information. Having the land survey in place, having the environmental work already underway, those are very valuable efforts that the town has already done that can help appeal, make the property appealing to a developer team. Then there's evaluation criteria, and then we'll touch on that briefly. Flexibility is important to allow for unknowns and new ideas. So there is the notion where you want to demonstrate what's desirable for the community to see, but the general advice is to not be too restrictive in what you might allow. And that's where the evaluation criteria comes in. So there's just a couple more slides here. But the way this is set up is a table. On the left side are the criteria. So it's broken down by use, the ability to renovate the building, and then new construction. And then, following kind of a standard RFP, you have a ranking system where the criteria, the project would be ranked against these criteria. And so for use, not advantageous would be that if a developer comes in and has no idea what they're going to put there, that might not be advantageous for the town in this case. And advantageous use would be potential end uses. So if it's renovation and they could tell you that there could be three types of uses that fit in that building, that might be advantageous. Highly advantageous might be a proposal that comes in with an end use in mind. So if a team can come in and say, "This is going to be renovated for a small café or a small retail shop," that might give you the clarity to call that highly advantageous. Renovation, if someone comes in and is only going to do emergency repairs, it might not be advantageous in this case. If someone comes in and includes building improvements but doesn't have the entire program fleshed out, that might be advantageous. And then, highly advantageous might be someone who has the ability within the project budget to actually build out the space as well. And these are all examples, so these would be tailored in the coming weeks and in the coming months as the town gets more information, but these are kind of examples for the future use. New construction, not advantageous might be something that's out of character with the neighborhood. An advantageous proposal might be two-story mixed-use but doesn't have enough information available for the town to clearly decide everything. And then a highly advantageous would be a proposal that has all the information it needs to show that it fits in the overall character of the Village Center. And then the last, this is the second to last slide, which covers some responsive design, some environmental criteria, and purchase price. So responsive design is something that the town would hope that the team would have looked at where the property is located and tried to address some of the things. So, for example, a highly advantageous proposal would be something that really has the privacy landscaping. It's close to, it's close to abutting properties, so that's going to be important. Something that deals with stormwater, that would be highly advantageous. And not advantageous would be a proposal that doesn't really do too much to the site, and that's a way for you to rank these. Environmental, again, going with the fact that there are some remaining soil remediation activities, not advantageous would be a proposer who doesn't address that in any way. Advantageous might be someone who has a couple examples or proposes maybe a variety of different things that they would do. Or an advantageous proposal would be someone, a team who comes in with a comprehensive plan to work through that process. And then all of this kind of feeds into the purchase price. So along the way, there would be an appraisal. The town would understand what the value of the property might be worth, but the goal, it depends on the goals of the town, whether the town wants to see this site revitalized and become renewed. Then there might be some compromise on the sale price. If the building is in desperate need of a lot of significant repairs, that would be a point in time when the town might consider that value and encourage a developer to take on the project by potentially lowering the price. And then kind of in conclusion here, the RFP structure is that the town manager would establish an evaluation committee. So as proposed, with guidance from the town manager, it would be a member of the planning board, a member of this select board, the building commissioner, facilities director, and the land use director, or consultant. So that's an outline of the way an evaluation committee could be structured. And then, finally, kind of just looking at next steps, there are a few next steps. Number one here is complete an evaluation of the existing building. And through the town manager's hard work, that should be available soon. And that will be very informative, and that will help the town know whether you can lean into pushing for a renovation of the building or whether you really need to have options open that might allow for new construction. Number two, I meant to take out the ANRAD, so that's a fancy word. That's a fancy way of saying, there could be wetlands in the back of the property or the adjacent property, and so it is beneficial at some point to potentially have those mapped by a wetland scientist. That's information that would be potentially helpful. Three is continue to work with EPA and Mass CEP on the monitoring and work towards a solution. And whether that's the town or whether that's the developer, that's something that could come out of the next couple of discussions. Conduct an appraisal to determine the market value, and then initiate the RFP process. So it says here, so I'll just say, but this is just an example. The actual order of the steps may vary, but we wanted to give you sort of this overview and the more detailed information in the packet. And then by June 30th, the town will be receiving sort of a final report with this information available for the town to take the next steps. So I think with that, we can ask for questions or have a discussion?
All right. Well, thank you both for your presentation and the work that you've done for the community. I also want to thank the town manager, because I know a lot of work went into getting to this point. So I'll open it up to the board now for questions and comments, starting with selectman Euphyr.
Couple of questions. You mentioned a few times that the determination of whether the building could be reused would be soon. Can you put any kind of timeline on how soon is?
So we have a structural engineer coming tomorrow to do the evaluation, and so hopefully a report soon thereafter.
Oh, so it's really soon?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Because I can imagine that it's going to impact the RFP. And two more questions. The steps on your last slide, the order can vary, but the RFP is always the last one, right? You wait for all these other, you complete all the other steps in some order before the RFP goes out, or is that not true?
Sure.
I think that the order can vary, because the environmental is probably the biggest unknown at the site right now. There have been some assessment activities done after the remediation occurred, and the recommendation was to do another round of sampling there. That is something that's outside of our scope of work. The town is working with another consultant and with EPA. EPA does a technical, a grant of technical assistance, so they provide a consultant that comes out and does the work for that. There are developers that are not phased by contamination at a site and are willing to come in and redevelop a site and take it on, knowing that there's unknowns there, and it's just their risk. But a lot of the times, they would like to know more. And with the town not being the responsible party and being able to get the grants to do additional assessment and remediation work, which not exactly is a given, because it is a competitive process, but it's a lot easier to get funding to do that and determine the extent of it. It just takes a lot more time.
I can answer that, in addition to what Heather added. I spoke with Joe McLoughlin. That's who we've been using for our environmental consultant all along from Beta Group. The EPA, as you know, did install monitoring wells. We received those results from that first round a couple of weeks ago, and that showed a decline in, I think, most of the wells. There was one that was higher than previously, but he said that can be the case. It wouldn't prohibit us from putting this project out to bid right now. It may mean that we may receive less than anticipated because of the extra added expense for the purchaser to remediate the contaminated soil. But that wouldn't prohibit us from going forward with that. And like Jeff and Heather said, the more information we know, but we can also put that onus, and we've said from the beginning, this project is going to be subject to any required permitting for that site, including stormwater. And if it needs to go through conservation, that would be another permitting piece.
And then I was curious, because I've heard of this with people restoring homes or buildings, that new building, if you maintain a certain percentage of the existing, it's not considered new construction. I don't know if that applies here or not.
I think that's a good question, and I don't think we know either. I mean, if a structural engineer comes in and says that it could be renovated, then that's, there are going to be certain building codes that have to be met, but it won't be a new building, so it won't have to meet certain of those.
Because new construction requires two stories, if I understood your presentation.
Yeah, two or more stories.
Under the zoning, correct, yep.
Yeah, okay.
For those who don't know, this has taken an enormous amount of time from the town manager. Since her tenure here, I think it's been a goal forever. So this is like seven years in the making, and I cannot thank her enough for, I mean, to approach every avenue. Obviously, it's a very delicate property that we didn't want to own, even though we were allowed to do the taking long, long before we did. But we wanted to be safe about it, so I'm glad we're at this point. So the first question is to the town manager, because I want to make sure, do we own it now? Has it been taken? Okay, that's what I thought. So the only question I have for you, and it's kind of a hard-to-answer one, which is, in your estimation, if we hear that the structural engineer is coming tomorrow, how long do you believe realistically we could expect that we would be ready with an RFP?
Well, I mean, if a structural engineer comes back, and I said soon, because they may be out there tomorrow, and I don't know how long it's going to take them to produce a report, that'll dictate a fair amount of how the RFP gets structured, whether you want to urge reuse or create the flexibility. In theory, a couple, there are probably some municipal steps that have to happen, which we didn't articulate here, and that may be something that I will adjust. It might have been in the other information, but I believe that the select board would have to vote to declare the property surplus, so that, my understanding is that's a vote of this board. So that would have to happen, and then the RFP could be released. So it doesn't have to take a very long time. And if I may, I think there is some potential opportunity to potentially release the RFP to find out if you have any interest at all, given the situation. And then, obviously, if you get a lot of bids, that's great. And if you get none, then maybe that dictates continued work on some element.
Thank you for bringing that. Yes, the point about the disposal, that was in your cover letter that TSC Group provided. That is a step that the board has to take that vote to declare a surplus property. That is another thing Joe McLoughlin and I discussed today. We could put this RFP out, and if we do not receive any responses, then we can, the next step would be go down the avenue of pursuing additional funding to further remediate the property and get it to a point then to dispose of it.
So I guess that would lead to my one final question, which is, do we know how much it would cost to do the final remediation? So after all these years, we still don't even know that?
I think it depends on these contamination reports that come out of the monitoring.
Which I'm assuming have to do with time at some point, so we have to do them over a certain period of time.
Right.
And how long have the wells been there?
I think they were installed in April, and it was like a month later or so that the... I think it's every couple of months, if I remember correctly.
Thank you.
Just a little more?
Yep. I also want to just say thank you so much for all the work that you've put into this. I mean, while it might be new to the board, I'm certainly not new to town, and this is something that is really important to so many citizens, and I think it's an immense amount of work that you've put into it, as well as your team. And this is great to see that this project is moving forward. I think my colleagues have already asked most of my questions, and then you just referenced the next reporting from the wells. Do you think it's every couple of months?
I believe so. I'd have to check back.
Okay.
EPA.
Okay. That was all I had.
All right. Well, I think this is a good starting point, so it'll be an ongoing discussion for sure. So I just want to thank both of you for your time tonight. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So we're going to move on to interviews, appointments, reappointments, and resignations. Up first, we have the ratification of town manager's appointment of building commissioner and land use manager. and land use manager, Brian Gingras.
My first appointment that I'm asking the board to ratify tonight is for Brian Gingras, and this would be for the building commissioner slash land use manager. This is a newly created position that combines both the building commissioner and the managerial components of the land use director. This is something that has been lacking since the previous land use director left in the fall. So this is a temporary solution until we find a permanent solution for the land use director. And the, this would cover the planning department staff, building department staff, and the conservation department staff for this managerial role. So since Brian started in May of last year, he's done a comprehensive review of building permit fees, streamlined a number of processes amongst departments due to his experience with our online permitting software, OpenGov, and has been the ex officio go-to at the Ritter Building. And to, he stepped up and offered this assistance, and I think he's the perfect fit for this at this point in time. So I'd ask if Brian wants to come up, if you want to answer any questions.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Brian Gingras, building commissioner at the moment.
Yeah, you don't really have to say anything if you don't want to. It was obviously introduced already, but I'll open it up to the board for any questions or comments. Selectman Emke.
No, I have no questions.
No questions.
Thank you for being willing to step up for this position.
Thank you.
Same. Thank you. I think you clearly have a respect to the staff in the building, the confidence of the town manager, and I have no doubt you'll be great.
Yep, same here. I'm really grateful that you're willing to step up like this, and I think it'll be a big help, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Is there a motion?
I move to ratify the appointment of Brian Gingras as the building commissioner slash land use manager.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next appointment I'm asking the board to ratify tonight is for Brianna Bowser. Brianna, this is for the seasonal lifeguard position. Brianna has been a library page at the Lunenburg Public Library for the past year and a half and recently resigned from the position to begin to apply for the seasonal lifeguard position at the town beach. In addition to her library experience, Brianna has worked last summer as a seasonal lifeguard for the town of Lancaster. Given her certifications and experience in lifeguarding, she'll make a great addition to our local beach.
Any questions for the town manager?
I'm assuming unless there are two families of this name, that her brother also is a lifeguard?
I believe so.
Yeah, I recognize the last name.
Well, it's a good family, and I look forward to her being a seasonal lifeguard.
Is there a motion?
Move that we ratify the town manager's appointment of the seasonal lifeguard of Brianna Bowser.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes.
Thank you.
All right. So up next, we're going to go to the ratification of the town manager's annual appointments. This is going to be a very long list, so I'm just going to read the names, and then we can get a motion afterwards to appoint the entire slate. So there's three different files here that I'm going to have to read from, and I'm just going to skip over all of the ones that we invited in for an interview tonight. And I apologize in advance if there is anyone whose name I mispronounce. Anyone can feel free to correct me after I make all of the announcements. So, which one do you want me to start with? That is, this is the select board.
I thought you said town manager.
Oh. All right. So Americans with Disabilities Committee, term to expire June 30th, 2027, Barbara Reynolds. Architectural, nope, not that one. Conservation Commission, term to expire June 30th, 2027, Mike LaRouche and Jenny Putherer. Council on Aging, term to expire June 30th, 2027, Deborah Lincoln and Kathy Beal. Cultural Council, term to expire June 30th, 2027, Dan Burns, Elise Wiley, Donna Saya, and Karen Kemp. Green Communities Committee, this one doesn't have a term to expire.
That would be a three-year.
Okay, just making sure. David Blatt, Chris Holden, and Kim Duffy, with a term, term expiring June 30th, 2027. And then, yeah, do I have to add the correction of term or?
So Dave Blatt and Chris Holden would be June 30th, 2027?
2027?
Because that's a three-year.
Okay, correction.
Kim Duffy is the correction number.
All right. So Dave Blatt and Chris Holden for a term to expire June 30th, 2027, and then Kim Duffy, term to expire June 30th, 2026. And then Public Access Cable Committee, term to expire June 30th, 2027, Steve Archambault and Faith Beal, and then Pete Lincoln, correction of term to June 30th, 2025. All right. So we'll move on to the next one for the Police Department. Full-time Officers Chief Thomas Gamble, Lieutenant Jeffrey Thibodeau, Sergeant Joshua Tochi, Sergeant Sean Zerait, Sergeant John Morielli, Sergeant Paul Theodoulou, Detective Joshua Matthew, Officer Jonathan Brock, School Resource Officer Bradley McNamara, and then Officers Jacob Lechance, John Wagner, Gage Russell, Cameron Monroe, Anthony Capucci, Jeffrey Hill, Jesse Reed, George Tibbetts, Michael McCormick, Jenna Morse, and Joel Ortega. Reserve Officers Robert DiCosta, Benjamin Campbell, Paul Duquette, Sean Connery, and Civilian Traffic Members Paul Bosikas, Tony Brennan, John Hazelrig, Daniel Bourgeois and Robichaud, Tyler Thibodeau, Andrew Fields, and Robert DeConzo. And we have one more file for me to read, and that's the town manager appointments. So Americans with Disabilities Community Committee, Barbara Reynolds, Animal Control Officer Kathleen Como, Building Commissioner Brian Gingras, Dam Keeper Ronald Wilson, Assistant Dam Keeper Rich Patry, Emergency Management Director and Fire Chief Patrick Sullivan, Races Control Officer Ralph Swick, Assistant Races Officer Brian LeBlanc and Janine Swick, Field Driver Kathleen Como, Forest Warden Patrick Sullivan, Hazardous Waste Coordinator Heather Lemieux until August 4th, 2024, Hearings Officer Heather Lemieux until August 4th, 2024, Inspector of Plumbing and Gas Gary Williams, Assistant Inspector of Plumbing and Gas Jeremy Pierce, Public Wires provided by PJ Keating, Dina Brant, Erin Moran, Chris Driver, Jay Valliere, Mike Reynolds, Jen Oliveria, Inspector of Wires Baron Bowser, Assistant Wiring Inspector Jack Bury, Clockwinders Tom Alonso, Louis Franco, Mike Kidney, Chuck Venezia, William Tyler, George Martin, Tree Warden William Bernard, and Veterans Service Officer Michelle Durkey. Is there a manager, is there a motion to appoint all of those requested appointments I just read through?
Mr. Chair, for clarification, did you exclude, and I wasn't able to follow along, the ones that we are interviewing with?
I did.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move to appoint and ratify the appointments of all individuals previously noted by you.
Second.
All right. Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes. All right. Up next, we're going to go into the Select Board Annual Appointments for Terms Ending June 2024, with the ones that were requested for interviews. So up first with the Agricultural Commission, I'm going to invite Mary Ray Holman up. So if you could just introduce yourself, tell us what it's been like on the Agricultural Commission. I'm sure there will be questions.
Hi, I'm Mary Ray Holman, 357 Goodrich Street. It's been good being on the Agricultural Commission. We've done some good things here in town. We hope to do some more productive things. We have three of us on the board now. We were actually hoping that we could possibly get a liaison from the Select Board to have one of you join us for the future to hopefully get some things going. As most of you know, we are most likely not having a farmer's market this year, so we'd like to try to get that going and salvage what's rest of the season, if possible, or if not, come back next year stronger than before. So.
All right. Well, thank you.
Don't need to go into detail about myself.
You can if you want to. You don't have to if you don't want to. But I'll open it up to the board for questions or comments.
Okay.
This is a reappointment, is that correct?
It is.
Because I don't see anything in the drive. Is this your first term?
Yes. This will be my second.
Okay. I don't have any questions. I mean, obviously, we want to see the AgCom back on track, so if you're willing to do it and be part of that, that is excellent.
Thank you.
I agree. I don't have any other questions either, but thank you for being in this role.
All right. Well, someone asked for you to come in for an interview. Was it me? I am more than happy, more than happy to reappoint you, so is there a motion?
Move that we reappoint Mary Ray Holman to the Agricultural Commission for a term, is it three years?
It's, that's the correction one, so it is June 30th, yes, a three-year, so it was supposed to expire June of this year. It was incorrect on our previous list, so it's a three-year.
Okay. So it's till June 30th of?
2027.
2027.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Congratulations. You've been reappointed. Thanks for coming in tonight.
Thanks.
All right. So I don't see anyone else, well, actually, okay, hold on one second.
Mr. Chair, I mean, I'm not sure why we asked the AgCom to come in, but it may have been me, but I want to just thank, I want to thank Mary Ray for stepping forward for this role. You know, I think she does a great, great work in our community. You know, I buy my hay from her, and we talk about some goats every time I go down there. And I think that, you know, there's going to be some, hopefully, good work coming out of AgCom over the course of the next couple of years.
Thank you very much. I second all of that. All right. So moving on to the APDC, Richard McGrath. Is Richard McGrath here? No? All right.
Was he?
He was supposed to be.
Yep. So how do we feel about appointing? I know people requested that these commissions come in for interviews. I would prefer if people made that recommendation, if whoever it was that made the recommendation...
It was me. I would like for Mr. McGrath to be interviewed for the APDC.
All right. So we...
If I may, Mr. Chair, can, can we at least publicly say why we're asking Mr. McGrath to come in, who's served on this forever? And then, it would be nice to know why all these people were picked out, and we just heard that, we don't know why Mary Ray Holman was asked to come here when other people aren't. So can we find out what, why we want Mr. McGrath here for both of his positions?
Yeah, I don't mind if anyone wants to speak to that.
Yeah, I can speak to it. So I mean, I think that Mr. McGrath has done great work in our community. He was instrumental in helping write the bylaws for the APDC. You know, we did not get a pretty thorough update from them in the fall, and so I, you know, I think it would be a great opportunity to hear about the work that they've been doing, the work that's upcoming, you know, going forward. And that's, that's my intent. For the Historical Commission, I had a question about attendance when it came to one of the members, Megan Lorden, and that was why I requested to interview with the Historical Commission. Just looking briefly at their minutes, it seemed as if a lot of meetings were missed, and I wasn't sure if, you know, if Megan intended to remain on the commission or not. So that was the reason why.
All right. Well, I do want to ask the town manager, just to be clear, what sort of communication have you had reaching out to them, and if you received any responses?
The executive assistant reached out to the people that the board requested come in tonight and heard from Alba, Ms. Lorden.
You did hear from Ms. Lorden?
No, all but.
All but Ms. Lorden, okay. All right. Well, Mr. Passios is here, so I'll go ahead and welcome him up if he wants to tell us why he wants to be on the Historical Commission.
And Mr. Chair, I am comfortable appointing Mr. McGrath to the Historical Commission in his absence.
You are? Okay. We'll come back to that. Come on up, Mr. Passios.
Historical.
Historical.
I just wanted to be aware of what you just said, because my comments kind of key in on that. My application to get onto this committee has been on file now for a number of months. As you know, I've come before you in a number of iterations of appointments to this committee. I feel with my intimate knowledge of town, with my memories back, I was thinking about it this year, 67 years I can remember back living in this town. And I know a lot of the history, not as well as some of these members that are on the committee presently. But basically, my form was in there only to replace any one of these members that chose not to re-up. I'm still a little confused as to the term, the end of terms for this committee, because there is one member that is not mentioned this evening, that is adamant that his term is up this year, and he had no intentions of re-upping. So I don't know if that's been sorted out.
Is that Mr. Laxo?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'd be willing to fill his position, but I don't want to take from a seated member if they want to continue.
I was going to ask about that, so just to be clear, he has no intention of being reappointed?
And his term is up?
Yes.
Without any corrections?
It is one of the corrected terms.
Oh, okay, okay. That, that answers the whole question, because as, as Heather knows, there are a lot of five-member boards that had three people coming to the end of their terms based on what was published. So like I say, if, if there is, what I hear, an open seat, I would definitely like you to appoint me to that.
All right. Well, thank you for that clarification and...
Yeah, I think, I think my, my presence in town is, is very well-known, and I'm here before this board on a weekly basis, so.
That is very true. I'll open it up to the rest of the board now for any questions.
Yeah, is there any other questions?
I do have one question. How many, because we've had this discussion, so I think you know how I'm going to vote, and only because of this reason. How many committees are you currently on?
Presently, I'm seated on the Finance Committee, committed through next May, filling out a term, and the Green Communities Committee, and I believe that's got two years, but don't quote me on it. I'm not looking to get to where I was before. I was seated on six or seven. And, and I'm very glad to step aside if somebody really wants to take one of these seats, but we don't have people knocking the doors down. And I think it's more important to have bodies in the positions than it is to leave them open.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, when is, when would this term be up? I lost track of that.
It also is a three-year term, right?
Well, it's an adjusted term though, isn't it?
It depends whose spot. Yeah.
It would be...
So if it, so Megan in Richards is 2024.
Right.
Bill Lasko is 2025, but we have not officially received his resignation letter. He's just been part of correspondence that I knew that he was not interested in.
And he was not interested in, okay, my understanding was he wasn't in, he wasn't interested in being reappointed. But now you're saying you're not, he's not interested in continuing, which means he's going to resign.
He thought his term ended '24, and he's not interested in continuing to serve on the board.
Okay.
But that term needs to be corrected.
Yeah. My, my preference would be to be appointed to that one year left in that term. I'll give that to you folks.
Okay. Well, is there a motion?
Well, Mr. Chair, I would assume that Mr. Lasko would need to resign before we can appoint Mr. Passios into that. And then generally speaking on this, you know, again, I wanted to, you know, I, I recognize that people can go through personal things that can lead to why people miss meetings. You know, I don't, I don't know what's going on with, with Megan. You know, I hope it's nothing, you know, I hope it's nothing really personal, but I know that she's missed several meetings, and so I just had an... personal, but I know that she's missed several meetings. And so I, I just had an interest and understanding if she was looking to come off the commission or she needed a pause. But I would be comfortable appointing Mr. McGrath this evening. And if Mr. Passios is interested in that one year, I would advise that we ask Mr. Lasko to submit that resignation and then appoint at a future meeting Mr. Passios into.
That sounds like a good plan to me. All right, thank you, Mr. Passios. All right, so is there a motion to reappoint Mr. McGrath then?
So moved.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
Have, Mr. Chair, have we gotten any correspondence from Megan Lorden that she, because her term is up, so that's a fact. Have we gotten any correspondence she even wants to continue?
No, nothing.
So then effectively, it's an open seat if we haven't heard in any regard. It's not like she didn't respond to this interview. She didn't respond at all even about reappointment.
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay.
All right, moving on to the town manager report.
Announcement on the Town Beach. The Town Beach opens up on June 24th and will close August 25th. The hours of operation will be Monday through Friday, 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and Saturday and Sunday, 12:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Swim lessons will be held on weekdays. Session one will be Monday, June 24th until July 5th, with the exception of July 4th. And session two will be Monday, July 22nd until August 2nd. For board and committee commission vacancies, we have one vacancy on the Agricultural Commission, one vacancy on the Architectural Preservation District Commission, one vacancy on the Board of Health, which is a joint appointment with the Board of Health until the next annual town election, one vacancy on the Council on Aging, three vacancies on the Cultural Council, two associate vacancies on the Green Communities Committee, one member-at-large on the Open Space Committee, one vacancy on the Park Commission due to the resignation from Anna Lockwood we received last night. That's a joint appointment with the Park Commission until the next annual town election, five vacancies on the Personnel Committee, and one vacancy on the Sewer Commission, which is a joint appointment with the Sewer Commission until the next annual town election. And we received that resignation from Mike Knoll from the Sewer Commission recently. Anyone interested in any of these positions can find the volunteer application form on the town website, complete it, and send it to the Select Board's office. If you have any questions on the roles and responsibilities, you can contact our office at (978) 582-4130, extension 144. For employment opportunities with the town, we have a Administrative Assessor Assistant, which is 32 hours a week, Alternate Building Commissioner, those are hours as needed, Assistant to the Sewer Business Manager, 19 hours a week, Land Use Director, 40 hours a week, Network Administrator, 40 hours a week, and Public Safety Desk Clerk, 40 hours a week. More information on each of these positions can be found on the website under Job Opportunities. Staffing updates. With the new Planning Board Administrative Assistant, Logan O'Connell, beginning last week, we are transitioning the assistants that Annie Aubrey has provided to the Planning Department since her departure from that office over to Logan. Annie has helped in receiving applications for the Planning Board at our office, has attended Planning Board meetings to provide consistency, and is now assisting with helping Logan becoming familiarized with administrative duties. We're very grateful for the assistance she has provided and being a resource during this transition. With Brian assuming the land use managerial responsibilities, there'll be direct oversight of that office that will make sure residents and other applicants have their questions and applications handled in a timely manner. As with our other employees, Logan also has access to the employee Intranet on our website that has a multitude of resources such as training videos for Munis, manuals, staff directories, forms, Maya trainings, training videos for Microsoft Office 365, training for our new phone system, employee newsletters, and more. We learned this week that Charlie Poole, the seasonal cemetery laborer that was ratified at a previous meeting by the board, will not be coming to work for the town due to personal reasons. Assistant Town Manager, HR Director, will be reposting this position. Employee highlights. Last month, Sergeant Sean Zarate and Officer Jonathan Brock were issued a letter commendation from the police chief for actions they took in response to a suicidal male party that was in distress. Sergeant Zarate and Officer Brock located the male party who had attempted suicide, and their quick action saved this person's life. Chief Gamel commended the sergeant and officer's actions as epitome of community caretaker's philosophy of community policing and their lifesaving actions. Update on fourth quarter tax bills with exemptions. After the fourth quarter tax bills were mailed out, it was discovered by the Assessors Department that to tax bills that had exemptions, there was an error in the total taxable value printed on their bill. The error did not affect the amount that was billed or the amount that was due. Those amounts were correct. The exemption amounts were correct. It was the total taxable value that was incorrect. This is also, the taxable value is correct on the property, Vision Property Record Card as well as the CAI Record Card that are available online in the Assessors' office. The Assessors have drafted a letter, which I sent to the Finance Director and Treasure Collector to review, and we will finalize this at our weekly finance team meeting tomorrow. This will go out to all tax bills payers that had received an exemption to make sure they have a copy of the tax bill that shows the correct value for their property. This was caused by our accounting software, Munis, and we believe was due to changes in charge codes in the backend for Tyler Technology forms. A ticket has been submitted to Tyler Technologies to resolve this before we begin our fiscal 25 preliminary billing. For the fiscal 25 preliminary billing, the finance team is preparing for the production for this. The principal assessor will, will be providing the tax files from Vision for the real estate properties and from RRC for the personal properties. We have lined up someone from Tyler Technologies that will be starting this process in the training module this Friday, and have lined up another consultant that worked in many communities assisting with the tax billing process for Monday, June 17th. Tyler will be providing this person from their tax team free of charge. With all the issues that we continue to have with Tyler Technologies, including the issues we ran into the last two times we did third quarter estimated tax bills and the fourth quarter actual tax bill process with Tyler, and how this has impacted the Treasure Collector's time to get her other responsibilities done, the finance team agreed it was necessary to engage outside assistants to get this tax billing done on time. These bills will include the estimated amounts of additional tax levy that will be raised due to the recent override vote. Any questions?
I have a couple. So under vacancies, am I correct in that there, there is no one seated right now in the Personnel Committee? Is that correct? It was an en masse resignation?
That's true.
So because it was an en masse resignation, have we done any research into why there was an en masse resignation of the Personnel Committee? And do we have any insight about why we have no Personnel Committee?
I can draw conclusions from, I think, the process that happened this summer, this, over the past two years during the process that was undergone to reposition descriptions, but I don't want to speak for those members.
Have we reached out to those members? I'm guessing I'm asking.
I personally, the only person I have spoken to since then and did not touch on the reason why was the Chair.
Okay. Because that has alarm bells written all over it. And the other question I had, obviously, this fourth quarter tax bill issue, again with Munis, have there been any billings gone through Munis that have not experienced any problem since the upgrade?
Since the, no. Since the migration, no. They've all been problematic.
Unbelievable.
Mm-hmm.
We have our meeting with the Sewer Commission next week.
On Monday.
Next Monday.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions for the town manager? I will just say, I know the members of the Personnel Committee all resigned, but I really do want to thank them for all the work that they did on the SAP. You know, it was a tremendous amount of work. They made a great presentation at town meeting. It was very well-received there. And, you know, I really do think that they're deserving of recognition for what they've done for the town. And I do have a request, Heather, just for the town manager's report. If we could just include, like, regular updates, monthly updates on the conservation backlog, just so we could get visibility into that, that would be great.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, moving on to old business. Up first is discussion on tax investigation report, which I don't believe is available today. Is that true?
That's correct.
All right, moving on.
Well, can I, can I ask when we will see a tax investigation report? We, we got a summary, I think, a month ago, and one would guess that if there was a summary, there was a report, but it seems like there isn't a report. And I haven't seen anything in this regard, anything. And as somebody who was the member of the, the team, I haven't seen anything in all, in months and months. I just want to know, just for closure, if we will ever see a tax investigation report, preliminary report at least.
Yeah, so one was emailed, the one, the summary from which I read. I believe I emailed that about a couple of weeks ago, but I, I don't think I sent the whole board on the distribution. I can do that while we're sitting here. But it's the compilation that I need to do, which is all the, you know, multiple different documents and printing them out and getting them ready. But I can get that over to you while we're sitting here, Mr. Alonso.
You didn't need to mail it to me.
No?
No.
Okay. No, I'll find it. Thank you.
All right, so we're going to move on. Discussion on the Use of Information Technology Resources Policy. This was added to the agenda before I became chair, so I am going to allow the previous chair to speak to this one.
Yeah, so I asked for us to consider, so in our Google Drive, what's been noted is this Use of Information Technology Resources Policy. This is separate from the policies that we have in the Select Board policies as it relates to boards and committees. So really, I think what, what needs to be clarified is, you know, most organizations, when an employee leaves the service of that organization, they cease having access to their emails. And, you know, what happens in our community is that it's, it's possible for someone to leave employment and come into being an elected official or an appointed official. And I think it would be helpful if we clarified, found a way, either through Select Board policies or otherwise, to enable the town manager to have the authority clearly to indicate that, you know, emails are by staff or under the purview of the town manager, that that process is under the purview of the town manager, and that essentially indicates that when employees leave employment, that they no longer would have access to those emails. I, I think there's, so that's what I, that's why I brought this up. I think also in the drive, you'll see is an email that I sent previously in which I was rather concerned about the, you know, in the past where we've had an employee leave employee and then come onto this board, you know, their email abilities were consistent, and there was no interruption in the process. And so, you know, really, you know, I think it's normal practice for businesses, again, to have a finalized date in which emails could archive, which is accounted for in this policy, but just to add some clarity to that, so that way there's consistency in enforcement.
All right, is there any discussion from other members of the board?
I'm uncertain what we're discussing. I mean, because, so the two documents in the drive, the email chain clearly says, clearly indicates that Mr. Jeffries is in favor of restoring Ms. Moore's email as soon as possible that she had access to. And yet, in the same paragraph, is saying that, well, obviously, it's common practice that when you stop being in the employment of an organization, you don't have access, like, your access as an employee goes away. Now, the fact that Ms. Moore has an email address that's the same because of the way that we do the email signatures or the email addresses, certainly, that would be the same, but not access to the emails. I mean, she is no longer an employee and therefore should not have access to those. Now, whether it's done in the past or not, clearly is mistaken, and it was never brought up. But I'm not understanding, balancing the two requests of the two documents that Mr. Jeffries pointed out.
Sure, I can clarify, Mr. Alonso. So, you know, my opinion is that, you know, if you don't have a policy in which it's clear that when employees leave employee and then move into being elected official or appointed official, and the past practice, or at least the recent past practice specifically with Chief Marino, was that there was no interruption between the two, that, you know, it would seem as if that that should continue. However, whatever, you know, real, so that's a situational kind of comment. In addition to that situational comment, which is, hey, if we haven't done this in the past, why are we doing it now? But I recognize that there's a need to create a policy that allows the town manager to point to this, say, hey, this is our common practice. This is why we do this, so that way you don't have instances in which it may seem as though, you know, in which you have to go into the special circumstances of each individual. It just makes it cleaner for us to do what every other business does, which is say, hey, when you leave the employment of the town, you cease to have access to your emails. Right now, we don't have that. We don't have that as a clear policy.
Mr. Chair, obviously, this is about me. I had access to my email up until the night before election, which is why this came up the way that it did. There were certain things in particular that I was looking for that I felt were relevant to many of the discussions that we were going to be having, which is why I sent the request asking for them. I do agree that the town should have a policy, or at least follow the policy, that the day that you leave, your, your access should be turned off. I shouldn't have had access up until the night before election. That was almost a month after I was no longer employed here. My email was never forwarded. I was still getting time-sensitive police emails that I was forwarding on a regular basis to the chief and my replacement. I'm still consistently, almost on a daily basis, helping to train that person. And there are many relevant emails that I was looking to have access to, to continue to help that transition, as well as, as this position here on the board. So while I don't disagree, and I do think that we need to have that policy, and it needs to, when you're no longer an employee, it should be terminated the day that you leave. That should, what should have happened. That's just not what happened in this situation. That being said, all of our emails, unless there's a specific exemption, are public records. So that does go into, into my request. I can speak offline about my particular request, but I just wanted to give some clarity on why this situation was brought forward.
Yeah, thank you, Selectman Moore. I think your insight's really helpful to understand what the real issue here is, and it's that you didn't lose access to your email after you were terminated. It was.
Wasn't terminated.
Oh, I'm sorry.
After you terminated.
All right, I apologize. I shouldn't have used that term. All right.
If I can add on to that, that was a mistake, obviously.
Yep.
The on, offboarding process that we have through, you know, the Assistant Town Manager, the electronic, so access is assigned to, was at that time assigned to the Network Administrator, our previous Network Administrator. I don't know why that wasn't done. I can't answer that, because he's no longer with us. And so that was obviously an error that should have been done at that time. And Chief Marino, his email was under our old email system. We've, at that time, we didn't have Microsoft Office 365, which has brought a whole host of additional ability for moving emails and type the licenses and security measures that we did not have in the old antiquated email system.
I'm also not sure in the private sector that there are policies against, you know, or policies for termination of emails. It is assumed pretty clearly that if you leave, you don't have access to your email. You shouldn't have access to your email. You don't need a policy to do that. The Use of Informational Technology Resources Policy, it's a use while you're an employee, or, and actually while I have access, even as an admin, you know, even as an elected official or appointed official. So I don't know that you needed a policy for termination. I mean, that's just assumed to be true. Just like, just like there's a policy to stopping your payroll when you leave. There's no policy to do that. You just. to do that. You just don't assume you're going to get paid anymore.
Well, I mean, there's state law, actually, that tells how people get paid when they unemployment. So I wouldn't call it a policy. I'd call it a law. But I think that it is helpful, you know, when you have hiccups along the way, when things don't go as one intends, that that's the intent, in my view, of the board with its chief policymaking authority, is to say, hey, you know, when these things happen, you know, you don't want the town manager to be, you know, painted in a negative light over something that the town manager ultimately didn't have anything directly to do with. You know, you don't want employees to, you know, things happen, and you don't want employees to be painted negatively because of, of things that occur. And so policies, you know, to me, help clarify expectations. And, and I think that it would be clearer if there was, in this case, a policy that just made it clear of what the common practice should be, which is, you know, once employees leave employment, that they no longer have access to emails.
Well, we could certainly pass that, but that doesn't preclude the point that nobody on this board has said that they believe that you should have access to begin with. So that raises a flag. Do you need the policy at all, number one? And if you had a policy, the town manager already acknowledged that it was a mistake. So if you had a policy, the policy doesn't stop people from making mistakes. So it still could have happened. The point is that nobody should expect that it would happen.
Yeah, well, we're all in agreement, but whether or not we actually implement a policy, I mean, I think it's kind of a minor update. So, you know...
As do I.
Yeah. But obviously, we don't have to decide on it tonight.
I, I can look, Mr. Chair, at the best location for this to live. I think it's a one-sentence, for the most part, update. I don't know if it would be best achieved with, I can look for where this can live. I'll make it out.
All right, thank you.
Just for clarification, by the way, it says even in the policy that, let's see this, on K, "The town reserves the right to delete emails or messages or other mutations at any time without notice anyway." So even in the policy, when you're an employee, you have, the town has the ability to do that. All emails are town property. They're not personal property. So as long as we...
Public record.
What?
But they're public record.
Right, it says, well, it says as long as, as long as you're required, you know, as long as they're, have them longer than, you know, by state. It mentions public record in that K.
Subject to exemptions.
Right.
Yep.
Right.
All right, well, I think we can table this for now. So, moving on, discuss outdoor dining policy. So there were some changes to state law. Basically, now the select board and not the state's alcoholic beverage control commission is responsible for approving or denying alterations to outdoor dining areas that allow for the sale and consumption of alcohol. So it was recommended to us by town council that we implement a policy to basically handle these types of outdoor areas and the application process for those alterations. There was a meeting held, and we did get feedback from department heads. I was planning on going through the examples that we had and the feedback that we got as well to draft an example of the policy, but the planning board still hasn't had a chance to discuss this. So I don't even really know if they agree that we need this policy, or whether or not we do as well. So this is more of an introduction. Are there any initial questions or comments on this?
I just briefly looked at the copies of the sample policies that are in there, so I haven't reviewed them in detail.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I think that, I think that if we're, you know, a lot of residents, especially if we think about the Whalen area where we have the pizzeria and the bar right near each other, we received a lot of complaints from a handful of residents who live right behind those, that area, once the, during the pandemic, when the open seating was permitted. And, and, and I think it would be helpful just to publicly get it out there that we are considering, that the state law has changed, it does allow it. So that way, it invites the public to be able to come forward with any comments or concerns that they may have. I think it's helpful to have the department heads, the people who, you know, day-to-day administer the government, give feedback and to incorporate that into whatever we do, but also to give the public this chance to come forward over the next couple of weeks and identify if they have specific concerns, if they think that over time it worked well, if they were hoping for this to sunset at some point and can't wait for it to be over. But I think it would be great just, again, give the public that opportunity. My opinion is I'm not, you know, understanding that some businesses are in residential neighborhoods, I'm less inclined to support outdoor dining. However, you know, if we hear from business owners that, you know, the outdoor dining option has added, you know, revenue to their business, has increased customers, helps them be more competitive with other areas, you know, I have friends personally that only like to eat outdoors. They look for restaurants that has, that have outdoor seating. So there's probably some good that's come out of this. But I just, I would like for us to keep this on the agenda for a little bit, just so we can get that public input.
Thank you. Any other discussion from the board on this?
I have a question about the copy of letter to the select board, outdoor dining.
Hold on one second, let me open it.
May 30th, 24.
Is that the one from Annie?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's the, the first sentence of the second paragraph, which...
Oh, yeah.
Has some problem. I don't know what this means.
Yeah, I know what you mean. I think there's just a little bit of a grammatical typo. Let me just open it so I can...
What it says is, "The local board is now solely responsible for approving amendments to changes in outdoor table service, only alteration of premises." So I don't know what that means. I think only is not the right word.
It is the right word. It's, it's the grammar and not the word choice. "We are only responsible for alterations of the premises." That is the change to state law. So we would be the approval, the approving body for any changes to the outdoor configuration of whatever their seating area is.
Where prior to this law, it had to go through ABCC.
Yes.
Because all of that is, obviously, entrance and exit is, has to be clearly defined in...
Because, yeah, as I'm reading it now, it's incomprehensible. But, okay, so, okay.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
Oh, they, did the ABCC or the state legislation, does it allow for, or does it mandate that you have to allow?
I don't understand the question.
I mean, is it mandated? If you get a license and you have a common Vic, by right, do you have the ability to have outdoor seating, or is...
You have...
Outdoor seating specifically, like a rider or an addendum to the, your existing licenses?
You have the right to apply for it.
Right, that's what I mean. But, but they don't have a right to get it.
No, of course not. We're still the licensing authority.
Right, but I'm saying if they ha, I didn't know what the state, I haven't read the state legislation, so...
Okay. Yeah. No, they're, I don't think they're entitled to it.
In COVID times, everybody was doing it because they would do anything to save businesses from going under.
Yeah.
But I never read it per se, because...
There's also, some of the documentation in here is from the state, and it does go through all of this stuff.
Yeah, so I said, I just, I just looked at it briefly.
Okay.
I will review it more thoroughly.
All right, sounds good. Any other discussion? Moving on to current business. All right, so the first two things that we have is review of interim town manager job posting and vote to designate town manager screening committee representative. So I'm going to introduce these two things kind of together, and then we'll go through both of them. So according to the charter, in order to hire a town manager, we have to establish a town manager screening committee. It is composed of the town moderator, who calls and chairs the meetings, and representatives from the select board, the school committee, the planning board, and the finance committee. They will meet, and they'll establish a process, and they'll take in the applications, rank them, and then submit a screened list of applicants to the select board, who will then decide who to move forward with. Now, for interim town manager, it's a little different. The select board has full authority over hiring an interim town manager. So we can hire an interim town manager for three months, a three-month appointment, and it can be extended at least once for up to an additional three months, so a total of six months. So, so far, the school committee selected their representative for the committee on last Wednesday. The planning board appointed someone last night. Clearly, we're going to do so tonight. And then that'll leave the finance committee. I'm not sure if they have a meeting on Thursday, do they? They do?
Do.
Okay, cool. Last time I checked, I didn't see it posted, so...
Around 4:15.
4:15. Well, at least it's up, and it should be on there. So this committee will have been put together one week after the resignation of, not the resignation, the announced resignation. Be careful with my language with that again, of Heather. So, moving into the job posting for interim town manager. I'll go ahead and read it for folks at home, and then I will ask the board if there are any other changes, and then we can vote to approve it. "The town of Lunenburg, a community of approximately 12,000 located in northern Worcester County, seeks a knowledgeable and strong leader with excellent financial acumen, as well as strong budgeting and communication skills to serve as its next interim town manager. Reporting to the select board, the interim town manager is responsible for generally fulfilling the powers and duties of the town manager, as defined in section 4-2 of the town charter located on the town's websites. Candidates should have a proven record of leadership, be proactive and a strategic thinker, instill confidence and trust that contribute to a positive work environment, and be able to build collaborative relationships with appointed elected officials, business owners, residents, and employees. The term of this appointment is anticipated to be three to six months. Salary is negotiable based upon qualifications. Interested candidates should send a letter of application resume to me. This position will remain open until filled, but responses will be reviewed starting July 10th, 2024." Does anyone have any recommended changes?
Mr. Chair, I have a question. And is it normal or common that the candidates would send the, send the application letters directly to the chair of the select board and not to Julie?
It is. This is what we did in the past. This was copied from the last time we hired an interim town manager, but of course, that can be changed.
Well, I don't know if we had Julie's position the last time we hired a town manager.
We did not.
All right.
If I may ask the town manager what she would recommend for this, for that third, fourth paragraph?
I mean, that certainly could. It certainly could go to the assistant town manager first as a starting point, and then the board would, couldn't do any executive session kind of review of them. That's what a screening committee is for.
You said could not?
Correct.
Okay. So, if I may, Mr. Chair, so that would be that we would, if, if we are the hot, well, we are the hiring authority for the interim town manager, that we would need to look at their resumes in an open session?
And if you wish to invite anyone in for an interview, it would be an open session.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I know it's unusual, but can I ask a question across the process you're talking about right now? Can I have something here in front of you?
Sure. So for people at home, Mr. Passios is going to come up and...
Thank you.
So I'm just trying to, Dave Passios, 56 Whiting Street. I'm just trying to understand what exact position you are talking about right now, because in the charter, section...
Let me pull it up.
4-1, in the last part of the paragraph. Vacancy in the office of the town managers shall be filled as soon as possible by the town manager screening committee and the select board. The select board shall appoint a qualified town administrative officer or employee as a temporary town manager to perform the duties of the town, the duties of the office until a town manager is appointed. Such temporary appointment may not exceed 90 days, but one additional renewal is allowed. So...
Yep.
I'm just, is this the process that you're talking about right now?
It is. Yeah, you covered all of it. So you cover the town manager screening committee, which is the process for hiring a permanent town manager, and then the interim town manager as well, which is mentioned in the charter after that. That is the up to six months, right, 90 days renewable at least once, position that's under the authority of the select board.
But it specifically states an officer of the town or an employee, not someone from the outside putting in application.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Can we, can we read this again?
I will, yeah. I'll pull it up. I'm trying to get the charter up now.
Because I read this previously, and I came away with a different conclusion than that. So let me just pull it...
About what? Who the interim town manager could be?
Yeah.
Okay.
If you interpret an officer, that could be someone the board appoints as an officer.
Right, right. The person we, the, to your point, Mr. Passios, and I understand what your question is, but the way, the way that C is worded is that if we went out for an interim town manager, that person would be the qualified administrative officer. We would be hiring a qualified administrative officer. It doesn't say we have to hire them internally.
That was some kind of my interpretation, but you guys interpret it the way you feel. That, that's fine, because it says qualified, what was it?
Qualified administrative officer or employee.
Shall appoint.
Right.
So I would say that...
Individual interpretation.
Right.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, my read is similar to Selectman Alonso's read, in that the select board shall appoint a qualified town administrative officer or employee as a temporary town manager. That my, my read of this is that we can solicit for an interim that we can hire and appoint that interim, and, and that that person would function as a town administrative officer, given that if you think who else is a town administrative officer that's not the town manager, there, in my view, there isn't one. And so I think this leads to an understanding that a town administrative officer is, is one that we would appoint, or an employee, which other communities typically do, senior department heads in the community as potential candidates for interim appointments.
All right. So is there anything else going back to the job posting?
Yeah.
Anything else we want to discuss about it?
I mean, I would, you know, my opinion, but it's up to the majority of the board, is that, you know, the resumes would come in through Julie, that, you know, I think that she should be able to screen minimum requirements. For example, you know, someone submits a resume and they only have experience working as a cashier, they probably would not be appointed as an interim town manager. And I think that there's some, with, with what is stated in this really brief job description, I think that it may be helpful to screen out anyone that, you know, is kind of being jokesters, or that may immediately apply, that clearly don't have any demonstrated ability.
So is your reasoning for doing that to avoid us as a board having to review it?
I think that we should review all, all candidates...
All the ones that I receive?
Yeah, I think we should, my view is that the board should definitely review all the resumes, but I think there needs to be an initial screen of them that we, you know, as an example, I've hired from Indeed. Sometimes when you do, you might get a decent amount of applicants that are applying for jobs that they're just not qualified for. It would just ease to click apply. And so you may very quickly look at a resume and say, hey, this person's only worked, as I said, as a cashier, or this person's only worked as a lifeguard. You know, we're probably, I, I don't think it, I think Julie can perform that function, so that way it streamlines our time in meetings.
Yeah, I think that's a fair request, especially, I mean, the question then becomes, as a board, do we want to review every single resume that I personally receive? I guess I didn't have the assumption that we would, but also I don't think that I want to be the person that screens what ends up coming to the board. So I do think it would be safer to have the HR director screen. I am comfortable with that, but I would like to hear from other members of the board.
Yeah, so my request would be to change your name in here to Julie's name.
Understood. Understood. What do you guys feel?
Having worked with the hiring process with Julie before, I think she does a great job of screening out applications. I think in a previous role that I worked with her, she keeps all of them and was able to sort them out into ones that she thought should move forward and ones that she didn't think were qualified. So if the board feels they wanted to see every single thing, I think that might be a possibility. But I would trust Julie to go through and screen the applications.
And I'm assuming if any of us ever went in and said, hey, Julie, can I see all of the current applications that have come in, even the ones that you have screened out? She would absolutely say yes. So it's not really...
How do most resumes come in? Are most of them electronic these days?
Yes. I think I've seen probably a handful in my time here that come in.
I mean, I figured as much, but I wanted to ask. I mean, it doesn't matter to me. I can't imagine we're going to get loads and loads anyway.
Yeah, that's fair.
So, I mean, I don't mind seeing all of them. It doesn't matter. But, I mean, it takes someone literally less than two minutes to know if it's a serious one or not.
I mean, it's consistent with what we do in the private sector of like our recruiter or HR pre-screens of our candidates, all of our applicants.
All right. So let's just go ahead and say that we'll change it and have Julie be the point of contact for this.
Can I just make one recommendation or assistance to Julie as far as if you have minimum requirements to add those? So she can, that will help her in determining what you perceive as minimum requirements?
Should we discuss that right now?
Yes, we should.
Initially, my thoughts are bachelor's degree. I think that that should be a basic requirement.
And any specific specialty?
I remember your masters, I remember that your masters is in public administration.
Public policy.
Public policy, that's right. Yeah. Sometimes I think people switch degrees, switch careers. And so, I mean, I think a lot of young people get degrees and they change their mind or they just go a different track. So I don't know. For me personally, I don't think it matters, the field, so long as they at least have that bachelor's degree. And then a minimum of at least, you know, five years working in a municipality. It should be more than that, but I, you know, I'm thinking interim.
I would say if the degree isn't in a relevant field, that you should have more experience in relevant experience than someone who has the degree in a relevant field. I mean, that's kind of what we do when we're looking at candidates.
That's why I feel this is all a judgment call. I mean, I think, I would just want Julie to weed out the ones...
The obvious.
The ones that, yeah, clearly, like, I don't have to tell you that this person isn't qualified. Like, a layperson could tell you that this person's not qualified. I don't want her to go into specifics about things because there's lots of different factors. A degree is a different factor. I mean, years of experience and what they did is a different factor. And how many years offset not having a degree? If I don't have a degree, but I've worked in municipalities for 20 years, does that offset the fact that I don't have a degree? I mean, so I'd want to know that. I don't want Julie to decide that for me.
Yeah, I completely agree with that, Selectman Alonso. I think Julie is more than capable of figuring out who would be at least worthy to come before us for us to review and who isn't, so.
And anything questionable that she's not sure about, she just pushes it?
Right. And then what I would recommend, Mr. Chair, is that we, you know, as they all, they all get distributed to us, and they get a designation, a number, a letter, or something. And we all send back to Julie that these are the ones I want to eliminate. And if, you know, if there's a majority, just on people, or we just say, no, yes, no, yes, these are the people we want to see. And then anything that has a majority, that's who we interview.
If I may ask the town manager, because I, with asking for minimum qualifications, I mean, are there, do you see the potential that if we kind of leave it loose, that there's, it's going to be a lot of wasted time on Julie's part?
I think it will, it always helps to have some kind of minimum qualifications in a job posting. Because then, yes, a lot of people, different people will apply.
So it may be helpful, in my opinion, I'm hearing...
But if you want to just, Julie is well-versed in reading out applications as well, so.
So we can at least continue working on our list if we were to add it. So we want at least a bachelor's degree, five years in municipal government, maybe more, and...
Yeah, for sure.
Substitute of a bachelor's degree. Do we have a certain number that we're looking for?
I think that I generally agree with what is being said, that, you know, we, you know, someone may not have a bachelor's degree, as Mr. Alonso indicated, but may have 25 years of experience working in municipal government that's very capable of doing the job. And so, you know, if we're going to say bachelor's degree, I think we may want to also add the language that says bachelor's degree or...
Or relevant job experience.
Yeah. Comparable and relevant, you know, job experience.
So it may be obvious, but it doesn't say in here municipal experience. I mean, are we going to get a retail store manager applying?
Well, again, it does...
I mean, it should be obvious, but it's not...
The listing references the charter, and the charter talks about it, and the qualifications there, and the job duties, so.
You think someone's really going to go there and look?
But that's not, well, again, that's our rule.
If we want to try to eliminate the, you know, the inappropriate or clearly not qualified applicants, I mean, having it in there, I know it doesn't prohibit someone from applying, but I have seen people overreach incredibly high.
Oh, yeah, of course.
Especially lately.
Oh, yeah. No, no, when we did this last time, there were people who came in and were not qualified.
It just seems weird not to mention.
That's going to happen no matter what job you post. You're going to get people who look to get to the next ladder or jump up six runs of the ladder.
Where does this get posted?
I would say it would get posted on the MMA.
The Beacon. Yeah, that's what we did last time. I wasn't sure if it was posted anywhere else, but I did see the MMA posting for it.
The only other thing I would advise is to change that, the web address from being the town web address to being the exact link to the charter. I would agree with that.
Oh, yeah, that's good.
And also, well, it says the section, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, 4-2.
We can go right to that section, it'll be easier.
We could put in...
It shouldn't be 4-2, it should be just Article 4. Of course, it's really 4-1, it talks about the qualifications, and 4-2 talks about the powers and duties.
In the third paragraph where it says candidates should have a proven record of leadership, we could have put municipal leadership there if to reference.
Yeah, I like that.
I think it's hard to add very many specifics when you're looking for something so broad for an interim position without doing a full detailed, you know, job posting. It's difficult to add, like you said, with the degree and the experience. You know, we don't want to limit the pool too much. But I also don't want to make the workload for Julie too hard either. I think if we can add a few little things like that, that would be helpful.
I mean, I don't want Julie to be responsible for the fine sifting. I want her to do like, okay, get the rocks.
Yeah, rough, yeah.
I agree.
The only other thing I would add, so it sounds like we're changing the website to be the specific link. We're changing the point of contact in the fourth paragraph to be Julie. We're changing the last paragraph to add in the word municipal. Is that correct?
Third paragraph.
The third.
Third paragraph. I think that we may want to indicate in the fourth paragraph what the potential start date is. Because we're not looking to hire, you know, immediately in the sense of like, it's not going to be this month, it's going to be in August. So I think we may want to note the term of this appointment is anticipated to be three to six months, beginning no earlier than, you know, put a no earlier than date on it.
Is, may I ask a question?
I think you'd want to hire before I leave.
Was what my question was going to be, if there was a training period?
And that there's some overlap.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Hiring before you leave would be ideal. That would be really reaching.
All right.
Yes, it's reaching, but we should always try.
It'd be helpful, I agree. But, you know, I also live in a world that still has a blue sky, so.
All right. So are there any changes we want to request here?
I think that's it.
Yeah. And we also want to add the experience, the relevant?
Well, that's, I mean, what, in the posting?
Yes. No, we're not going to have that.
Again, if we show them the town manager, that's how we would...
I would...
That would be the qualifications.
I would give Julie that guidance of bachelor's degree or relevant experience.
So we'll take that part out. So we're going to update the link to the charter. We're going to change the point of contact to Julie. We're going to add proven municipal experience. Was there one other one that I missed?
Town manager, town manager's making changes, why?
Oh, is she? Okay. And then once we get to a point where we feel good about it, we should vote to approve the changes and then authorize the HR director to post for an interim town manager.
Curiosity, July the 10th. Is that the first meeting in July? Is that why that date was chosen?
I think it was one month out from tonight, so we're close.
Are you looking for a motion, Mr. Chair?
If we're ready for one, yes. I think people are just reviewing it now that the updates were made.
I, what, Mr. Chair, the section I think was missing, in section two, I recommended that we don't just reference section 4.2, but section 4.1 and 4.2. 4.1 goes over the qualifications.
Okay.
So just section four? Is that what you were saying?
Well, you don't need all of section four, because some of it is termination and things like that. But 4.1 and 4.2 talk about the term, the qualifications, and the powers and duties.
July 10th is a Wednesday. So should we change it to the ninth? I'm assuming we're meeting on July 9th?
What day of the week is it?
July 10th is a Wednesday.
A Wednesday?
So that...
Does it have to be a month?
No, but the month usually is. Three in a month of time to have a posting.
Would it be okay to do the ninth? And so it's our meeting day? It's only a day difference, is that...
I mean, we want to start reviewing applicants as soon as possible.
Yeah, I think that sounds fine.
I would then even do, if you're going to be potentially reviewing them in time for your ninth meeting, to do the eights, to give Julie time to get them in.
Okay. Yep, that sounds good to me.
Mr. Chair, I move for the board to post the interim town manager job posting as amended.
Second.
Are you going to put section 4.1 on there?
It is.
I did.
Oh, I just refreshed it, I didn't say it.
Mine's a little slow, too.
All right.
All right, there was a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. The motion passes, and we are one step closer to getting an interim town manager. All right, up next, I already introduced this, so we can just move right in. Vote to designate town manager screening committee representative. Is there anyone on the board who is interested in serving as our designate?
I would serve...
I think with your experience, Tom, it would be great to have you in that role.
Yeah, I agree. Honestly, I think anyone on this board is capable of doing it. Is there anyone else that's interested? All right, is there a motion?
I move to appoint Tom to the town manager screening, excuse me, I move to appoint Selectman Alonso to the town manager screening committee.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. The motion passes, and Selectman Alonso will be the select board designate to the town manager screening committee. Up next is review of remaining ARPA funding and committed funds. So I'm going to turn it over to the town manager to go through the spreadsheet of committed funds.
Your drive is an updated spreadsheet provided by the finance director. This does not indicate the change where the school, the funds that were committed to the school, so they're still denoted as such, and the interest at the bottom was still unchanged from prior to that vote. So that was combining the sidewalk funds of the 101, 640, and the additional $100,000 from the interest for the school. So those, now, those funds can be reallocated.
So the total amount committed, is that still, it looks like it's still including the 101, 640 for the sidewalks?
It is still including that amount.
Was that not coming out of chapter 90, or no?
It is.
Okay, so...
That's, so, yeah, I said that one was still showing as the original.
So what is the, because this is a PDF, I can't do any additions or modifications, but what is the current uncommitted balance?
It would be that 101 added to 193.
297.
193, 570 is the total uncommitted? That seems...
Yeah, that's...
Whoa. 193 plus the 101?
Plus the 101. Oh, okay.
Plus the 101, okay.
Yeah.
So 294, 295, and 100.
I can't believe I forgot these numbers already. I thought they burned into my brain.
For the schools, my recollection was that we committed more than the 101,000.
It was, so that additional 100,000 is reflective in the interest, so that's not reflected on the sheet. That's what I was saying initially, that the select board voted the 101, 640 plus another 120,000 of that interest amount at the bottom.
Got it. Okay. So as Selectman Mckee just said, the total is then the 193, 570 plus the 101. As Mr. Alonso said, that's roughly 295.
295, 210, 64.
210, 64. Okay. All right.
So... Some is complete, some is in progress.
I think it may be helpful, Mr. Chair, to solicit requests from the community as we did the first time, and things that can be achieved quickly. I'm sure some boards, committees, outside groups are going to have some requests coming our way.
I completely agree with you. I was going to give the board a couple more minutes to review the committed funds first, and then we can talk about the funds that are still available that we will have to reallocate.
Yeah, and actually, to get some updates on ones that haven't spent anything yet or have spent very little. The Boys and Girls Club, not sure what the comment means. Grand agreement, 25,000 be processed on 6424 warrant, so...
So 25,000 of that 50,000 was on the 64 warrant, the warrant that was signed. So it's, the balance is actually 25,000, which now that, because of the grant agreement, they have to submit proof of salary payment and their program expenses, so the other 25 can be paid out for fiscal '24.
So FY '24 and FY '25, the amounts there will be spent, we're confident in that?
Yeah, the full amount for the 50,000 will be spent by the close of the '24. And then 25.
Okay, and the Cultural Council has already said they want to, because they had turnover, but they still have plans to use the funds for the Artisan Residence, correct?
They're actively doing it, yes.
Okay.
I have a question in the interim...
I have a question in the interim lull to the town manager. Do we know, so these have to be committed by the end of this year, correct?
Yes, and it has to be spent by the end of 2026.
Right. So the question becomes, if we commit something, and that committal doesn't go anywhere, so therefore that committal gets rescinded, do we have the opportunity to recommit?
No.
So anything we commit to, we had better spend the money on.
Yes.
Can we?
And this is reported through our reporting to the federal government.
Can we overcommit?
Overcommit the funding?
Yeah. In case something falls off.
No. No, it has to be for the funds that we've been.
So we better make sure by the end of this year that everybody who has money on this list has a plan to spend this money, because if, I'll say publicly, that if $1 of this is not able to be spent, I'll go ballistic.
We are talking calendar year, it's end of December, right? Not fiscal. I just want to make sure.
I think we need a plan that we have, you know, at our December meeting, that we pull back anything that doesn't seem like it's actually moving forward, and recommit them to, as Mr. Passiels identified, some capital things that we have coming up that we know are going to hit us in the future, and recommit.
I think we'd want to know that by October.
Oh, yeah, I completely agree. Yeah, we should have a check-in much earlier, by the end of the year, so we can have enough time to really recommit it.
I mean, the one that stands out to me, the 225,000 for the municipal building design, the architect, engineering costs, that is a big number.
It is a big number, but that money, no matter what, is going to get spent. I think what we were waiting for on the building design committee is, we ran into an issue last time where we had hired an architect and engineering team, they pulled together numbers too early in the process, that by the time we were ready to present something to the town, the escalator at that point was already 30%. So the hold here is that as we get ready to go before the town, which is going to now be this next spring, that we need to get numbers for project numbers as close to that date as possible, and also accounting for, you know, recently, over the last couple of years, there have been changes to the building code, there's been changes to the energy code, and so making sure that the project that we go to the voters with has money, and that we are accurate in our numbers. So, you know, I expect that we're going to, you know, get this out to bid into the end of the summer, and that this will be something that will be worked on in the fall and winter, in preparation for the spring. But, I mean, regardless, the way we worded it was, you know, architect and engineering costs, it's pretty broad, and there's a lot of need, no matter what, in our community. You know, I don't think we, even though the intent here is municipal building design, I do believe that no matter what, we're going to have, these funds will be utilized.
And I'm just worried that time is running short. We're, you know, less than six months from the end of the year now.
Well, that's for allocating it. It doesn't have to be spent until the end of 2026.
Right, but it has to be committed, it has to be under agreement for something, right? Is that?
It has to be committed like this.
I would recommend that it be, because they are discussing the definition of committed, which could be under contract.
Yeah.
So I think it's in the town's best interest to have something under contract, some sort of agreement that.
Yeah.
Were a contract in place.
How long does it take from the board to vote to allocate for it to become fully under contract?
The procurement process?
Oh, yeah, the procurement process?
Six, eight weeks.
Okay, that's still worth keeping in mind.
Or, you know.
Yeah.
It's a complicated RFP, or.
Is that fair, or six, eight? Weeks, roughly?
And depending on if you're asking the assistant town manager, right now she has a queue of different bids, so.
And if you put something out there, and God forbid, nobody bids on it.
Like, that's never happened, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Lot of, yeah, a lot of ifs and ands, so.
The, I will say, I'm speaking with the finance director about the consultant for ARPA reporting, and if we really need those funds, he did do the last report for, to report to the federal government, so waiting on a response, and just to, you know, affirm that, and whether those funds can be reallocated.
Oh, so another, we do it in-house, and another 60,000 becomes available.
Right, if I may, Mr. Chair. So for the Marshall Park project, you know, we've committed a million dollars here, and I know that it's kind of, so what would the advice then be to the parks commissioners in terms of how do they bring that under contract by the end of the year?
They, so the OPM contract has been finalized now. That will then trigger moving to the designer, next step. The 100,000, or million dollars, we could easily say that's a committed piece because of the park grant, because of that matching component. So we have, there's a number of contracts that could be designated to that.
All right, is there any more discussion on ARPA for tonight?
I think the other thing I'd like to explore, too, are the items that were cut from the budget that are appropriate for ARPA spending.
Yeah, I think, I think Mr. Passiels.
Well, those were capital.
I know, but I like to consider those lists, too, because, A, we know we need them because they were put together by department heads, and those would make good fillers for things that we haven't done, so.
Yeah.
We roughly had, if I recall correctly, Mr. Chair, and to the town manager, as I recall, it was about $179,000 in all the, the total cost of all the staffing changes that you were proposing, is that roughly correct?
I think it was 140, if I remember, but, yeah, I don't think that was a recommendation to use on staffing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It was more the capital type, or one-time expenses. Pavement management was one line that was cut. The IT budget for library equipment was cut.
I think there's a K-9, police K-9?
The K-9.
The comfort dog program, is that what you're talking about?
That didn't make the budget, yeah, as far as.
There was a council on aging reduction that I made a point of saying, because I know that the council on aging came here, I think it was the meals program or something like that.
That was staff-related.
Staff-related, right.
Millsite coordinator.
Yeah.
There are a number of departments that did not, were in the preliminary budget for staffing needs that were included in the final budget.
And then we heard a request tonight, too.
I'm sorry?
We heard a request tonight.
Yes.
I see that we had ours for the FY '23 tax assessment issue. My guess is that has completed that contract, correct? So that 14-plus thousand can drop down, too, right?
There are some related expenses related to ATB cases that were being paid out of that, as well, related to the tax assessment. So as soon as I know that those are fully expended, that would be closed out.
There could still be, you know, balance left with some of these as they.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that's what I mentioned, that one with those.
So I think we, I think we need to examine this much sooner than.
Police one, it already says in the notes that it can be reallocated.
Yeah.
All right, I think this is a good starting point for ARPA. Obviously, we're going to continue having this conversation. So let's go ahead and move on to discussion on budget task force. So Selectman Emke put together a presentation, I believe, right?
Yes.
All right, so if we can get that up, the floor is all yours.
All right, so this is just an overview of some examples from other towns in Massachusetts. Literally just a quick Google search, not a deep dive, turned up these five on the second slide.
Nope, hold on. Now I can't. Let me just make an announcement to make sure you're muted.
All right, for anyone on Zoom, just make sure you're muted.
So with the exception of Belmont, which they did a pretty extensive overhaul of their whole budget planning process in 2015, they just had a recent huge override, $8.4 million override, and I'm surprised they didn't have a task force formed for that, but I think it's probably part of their new process since 2015, it's probably ingrained in that. But the others are, Groton, Hingham, Westford are all within the past couple of years, and then Truro does this annually, which I thought was interesting. They care, they call them different names, and the size of the task force varies quite a bit, and then those are links to their final report that I included. Taking a closer look at the composition of these task forces. Belmont had the biggest, 13, but I think that's a reflection of the extent, I mean, it was really a big, complete, deep-dive overhaul of the whole process, so I think that's an outlier. Groton actually was also very large at 11 people. The one consistent thing across these towns is they tend to have the same membership in terms of town manager, finance director from school in town, school superintendent, and then members from select board, FinCom, and school committee. Some of them, like Groton, has more than one member from the boards or committees, and then some towns like Belmont and Westford include residents. Then the timing, looking at the time that these groups were formed, and then when they delivered their final report, Belmont, two years, like I said, extremely extensive, but the others are in the four-to-five-month timeframe, which is impressive. I'm most familiar with the Westford final report, and that was, I thought, very thorough, and it's impressive, I think they got that done in five months. The next slide shows, I pulled out the goals and scopes from the various towns. I took Truro off now because they do this annually, and it's not exactly a fair comparison, but what's highlighted and in bold are some of the common goals or scopes that each town had. So they're looking multi-year, they're looking at both municipal and school, revenue sources, all spending, capital, operational, looking at places for synergy, whether it's outsourcing. So all the things that we've been talking about, and across the board, I think if you group them together, it's very comprehensive. They also compare to benchmark towns. That's also a common activity that they do. So in the last slide, I tried to combine, all of those goals are kind of saying the same thing in different ways and to different extents, so I tried to combine them into one, one slide here to capture the goals and the scope. So basically, to recommend five-year, I don't know, I think even five years is hard these days, but a sustainable fiscal plan that looks at both the municipal and school side, as well as capital improvements. And Hingham has, they included the definition of sustainable, which I really liked, and you can read it here, "financial forecast that uses realistic assumptions for both revenue and expenditure growth, allowing the town to provide services that meet the residents' expectations and ongoing expenditure obligations through regularly occurring revenues." They all used a lot of data, collecting historical data, looking at trends, future estimates, and comparing to benchmark communities. And then to summarize the scope that was defined on the previous slide, it includes both operational capital budgets, and the funding needs and impacts for the capital budget, strategies as far as staffing, town and school operations, personnel costs, and then examining revenue sources, which does include overrides, as well as non-tax and non-override revenue sources, potential savings that can be gained through whether it's service outsourcing, or combining services, and then the impact that any proposal would have on residents, including increased taxes or fees, and then also impact of debt exclusions as it pertains to the capital projects, if they had any large capital projects under consideration. So that's the summary. The rest of the slides are just detail for each town, and then I have some other links, but, so it's, to form a task force, it's done by the select board. I personally like the way Westford set up their, the composition of their board, whether residents are included or not. I haven't made a, I have no opinion on that right now, but I do like the fact that Westford included town manager, school superintendent, the finance director, town school, select board, FinCom, and school committee representation. And I think doing it this year, I know this is not easy under the ideal conditions, and going into this with potentially an interim town manager or not, doesn't make it any easier, but I don't think that's reason not to try.
All right. Thank you, Selectman Emke, for the work that you put into this presentation. I'm going to open it up to the rest of the board now for questions or comments, and we're going to go one by one, starting with Selectman Alonso.
So my first question, first of all, I'm completely for this. I think it's probably overdue. I would ask Ms. Emke, do you, the membership, first of all, I think you have to keep it less than a cavalry charge, so nine is probably the maximum before it becomes. But are all these, did they make any differentiation in the formation of the task force, whether they were all voting members, or some of them were just ex officio?
I think for Westford, they were all voting.
So I'm not, I like the Westford one as well. I don't, I don't know about the residents or not, but seven would be fine. I think having a, you know, the success of this is going to be in the data and in the charge of the task force itself, but I think we do need to look back, you know, at least five years, or maybe even seven or 10, to see trends and everything, because we probably want to start a little bit pre-COVID, I would think. But, but yeah, it's definitely needed, because the way we approached the override this year, you know, really was not comprehensive, and it was targeted at saving things, not planning things, and that's a way different strategy.
All right, Selectman Moore?
Sure, I also want to say thank you to Selectman Emke, this is a great presentation. I also like Westford's. I do think that it would be important to include residents. I think we've had quite a few residents that are not necessarily on any of these committees, but have been actively involved in this process, so I think continuing to allow them to have a vote, or say, or be involved in this process is important. What's our timeline for this, if this is something that we move forward with? I'm assuming we would want this done prior to fiscal '26? So sooner the better, I would assume.
I mean, if we look back, the other towns, in five months, they presented, you know, they, Westford started in May and presented October. Their budget cycle is a little earlier, their town meeting was earlier than ours. Their town meeting was earlier than ours. But ideally, it would be nice to have, you know, something to recommend at annual town meeting next year. But I think it has to be, something has to be presented at the start of the budget cycle, which I don't even, budget cycles now. I mean, it just doesn't end. So I would say before special town meeting, to have something.
So we'd be looking at at least October, even not stretching it if we're...
That is a stretch goal. I think that is aggressive, but yeah, that's what I would like to do. I don't know if it's attainable, but it's worth trying. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Selectman Jeffries.
No, I don't have anything to contribute. I think the presentation was good. I don't have any comments.
All right. I do also want to ask the town manager, too, what her reaction is and what her thoughts are.
I thought the, what Selectman Emke put together was really comprehensive, and very clear and easy to follow, and valuable information on how different communities have done it and formed the task force. I think the earlier and sooner this can get started to tie into the budget season for fiscal '26, the better. The budgets typically are sent out in December to target budgets to all the boards and, sorry, departments. But the capital planning process starts in the summer, and so I think this is a really good starting point. Thank you.
All right. So next steps, seems to me, obviously, we'll have to vote to either form the ad hoc committee, so the task force, also deciding membership and having the other boards and other committees who are going to participate to discuss their participation and vote whether or not they're going to, and who they're going to appoint to the board. In terms of, I guess, those steps in which should happen first, I mean, I think it would be pointless in this scenario to create the task force and then have some committee have some reason why they're not going to have anyone on it. So I think it's helpful in some way to get feedback from other committees, whether or not they're interested in joining...
They are.
Yeah?
I've had a school committee member volunteer. FinCom has interest, or would support it. The only question in my mind really is the residents, I don't know how to do that selection.
The selection for residents?
Would they be voting members?
Well, I mean, if you're going to have them on the task force, they might as well be.
They don't have to be, but...
Yeah, but I mean...
Because otherwise, it could just be through public participation, because the number does get a little unwieldy. And I don't see, I mean, these are the, the capital planning committee's not represented here. It was for Belmont, but...
Yeah. I think if there's anyone that's going to be appointed to this, I don't think it's even worth making anyone a non-voting member. I don't think I would support that. You know, everyone that's going to be on it, I think, should have the right to vote if they're on that board or task force, so. But it looks like we still have questions.
Bless you.
Bless you. It looks like we still have questions regarding composition, so maybe we should continue this conversation.
We'll see if we keep continuing. It's not going to start. This needed to start two weeks ago.
I agree with you. Yeah, no, I hear you. I do. I hear you.
This will largely fail or not fail, let's put it this, we will largely fail or succeed on the commitment, whoever the composition is. Like, we can't, you can't go weeks with people missing. I mean, it really, people, this is going to be probably one of the most dedicated jobs that people will have from any of these boards and committees, so that's going to be critical.
And it's summertime.
This might be not even possible, but in my current role in the municipality I work in now, for committees that are newly formed, that have such large membership, sometimes it's hard for them to find a time to meet. And is it possible for us, maybe this isn't even possible, but maybe to set that ahead of time, so that the people that do volunteer for the board know, okay, I'm committing, like, we, when you volunteer for a select board, you know it's going to be Tuesday nights. Just something to throw out there that maybe that might help who is going to be, or even volunteer for the board, is if they know when the meetings might be.
Right.
Especially if it is such a large membership, it's going to be hard.
Monday night's going to be the only night, then, probably, because Tuesday night, Monday, because school committee meets Wednesday nights, select board meets Tuesday, finance meets Thursdays.
But school committee will, over the summer, they meet less frequently if they meet, right? Don't they take...
Right. So unless you, yeah.
Yeah, but I think you're right, because planning board is not on this, so then that Monday would leave Monday free.
All right. So I'm going to look to you guys and ask you what you think we should do for next steps. So if we form the task force, can we always change the composition to it, if we want to add members to it? Is that an option?
Sure, it's our, it's our, it's our appointment, so we're the ones forming it.
Can I ask a question through to you? Selectman Emke, did you find any of the communities that had a charge, written charge?
That's what we're going to need, absolutely.
I found that our green communities charged. I didn't, yeah, I forgot to look on their website. No, I was just, I was focused on the reports.
Can we, are we able to form the committee tonight and then work on the charge next time? Or does it have to be out there all at once?
I think it would be really difficult to form it without a charge first.
Usually, a charge outlines the membership.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
I mean, I did print out the green communities charge, but it's a PDF, so I can't, I meant to ask you for a word document.
I think it's in the Google Drive, too.
I think that's where I got that from, but I only found a PDF.
I mean, we could reach out to Westford, see if they have a charge that can be used as a template.
All right. So either way, it looks like there's still some things we need to work out before we're able to form it. So, thank you again, Selectman Emke.
If I'm going to write the, the charge, can we settle the site on the composition?
Yeah, we can have a composition on the composition. I mean, hold on one second, let me pull this slide. Obviously, someone from the select board, school committee, finance committee, town manager should be there. And then the question arises, like, do we want, like, department heads there for relevant departments?
You're going to want your finance director.
Yeah.
I think it's West, in my mind, it's Westford, and the only question in my mind is residents.
Yeah, Westford only has three bodies that are elected bodies or appointed bodies. Everybody else is employees, so the top four are employees. And we can't make the charge, we have to run this by the school committee, because we don't have the ability to put a school superintendent, or the school finance director on the committee.
It starts July 1st.
Right. So we're going to have to get them to approve that.
And when you start involving staff, I think you have to be respectful to their business day, and trying to schedule meetings during the business day or as close to it as possible, which then is going to change who's available to participate.
Yeah.
But it seems as if the staff would be mission critical, given that the charter gives certain responsibilities to different entities, you know, school committees responsible for their buildings and grounds, you know, and if we think about any facility-type synergy, then you definitely need school committee superintendent, you know, town manager, or our building facilities director. So I think it's going to be pretty staff-heavy.
All right. So I just received a text from a viewer. I have Westford's charge. Do you want me to just go ahead and read it, so we all have this?
Sure.
All right. So the select board does hereby establish a nine-member budget task force consisting of one member each from the select board, school committee, finance committee, two members at large, town manager, school superintendent, or their designee, town finance director, and a school finance director. The budget task force shall be charged with recommending several scenarios for a five-year sustainable fiscal plan for the town of Westford. Said fiscal plan shall consider, as an example, alternative revenue sources, overrides and exclusions under Proposition 2.5, cuts in service, contracting out services, as well as other measures. Said fiscal plan shall include both operational and capital budgets for the town. The committee shall consult with pertinent departments as it formulates its plan. So that answers my question earlier. The task force shall present its findings to a joint meeting of the select board, finance committee, and school committee by October 1, 2023. The task force shall meet biweekly at a time and place, hold on one second, something's blocking, mutually agreeable to its membership. The select board shall reserve the right to continue the task force after the task is complete in order to adjust the plan due to changing circumstances.
Well, I think Ms...
Yeah, Slide 11 basically is...
Yeah, that seemed pretty, pretty close. What were you going to say, Selectman Jeffries?
I was going to comment that it seems as if their select board has a little more authority than ours. We may need to jointly create this win combination with the school committee.
Okay. All right. So clearly, we should just put some more thought into this, so we can table this for now and then continue the conversation. All right. So moving on, select board liaison and committee assignments. So we don't have to have everything assigned tonight, but we can just run through it, and if you want to find it, you have to go all the way to the beginning of the drive, scroll past all of the yearly meeting folders, and then go to select board liaisons, I believe it's called. Yep. And then, once you get to that folder, you want to tap on SB Representative and Liaisons 2023/2024. That's a spreadsheet we'll be going off of. All right. So, and by the way, for Selectman Moore, if there's anything you're interested in, you know, just voice that interest, and we can sort of work through. I'm open to having new things with anyone who maybe wants to try something new. So any interest there is, just go ahead and voice it. All right. So American with Disabilities Act Commission, we have Selectman Emke on that. Is that something that you want to continue doing?
Yeah, nothing actually happened.
Yeah, I know. Capital Planning Committee, Selectman Alonso, do you want to stay with that?
I'm fine staying with that, yeah.
All right. And like I said, if anyone is interested, as we're running through these, just shout it out. Council on Aging was Mr. Franco. I went to the meeting today. I really enjoyed it. I would like to continue working with them, so if no one else is interested in it, I would be more than happy to take this one. I'll also note that their meetings are on Tuesday mornings at 9:30 a.m., monthly meetings. All right, so I'll go ahead with that. Economic Development Committee, that was also Mr. Franco, so we will need someone else that's interested in that. I'll also say, too, like, my assignments have been pretty light. I have all of the regional meetings, which I go to, they're usually monthly, and there's almost never really to report on them, so effectively, I really only have the planning board, so I can pick up some more as well, too.
Mr. Chair, I would encourage a little bit of caution.
I know, I hear you.
As the new chair, you're going to be contacted quite a bit.
Very fair.
You want to leave yourself available for all that communication.
All right. Selectman Moore, would you be interested in being a liaison for the Economic Development Committee?
Do we know when they meet?
I don't know their schedule off the top of my head.
It's either, I think it's Thursday.
Thursdays, Thursday evenings?
Yes.
Sure.
All right. Thank you. All right, Finance Committee, Selectman Alonso, you going to stay on with that? Finance Committee Appointing Committee.
I'm fine keeping it, but I think that if Mr. Alonso is liaison for the finance committee, do you want to pick up?
I'm fine taking it, but it only meets when they have an opening, anyway.
All right. So Selectman Alonso can go down on it. Library Trustees.
I'd like to stay with them.
All right. I'm going to continue MART Advisory, MMPO. I guess I never put myself down for these other ones. Okay. FYI, the Economic Development Committee is last Thursday of the month at 6:30.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Chair, if you're on MPO, typically, you're not on MRPC, because it's kind of like a subordinate board.
Right, I know. I don't go to those, and we usually have representatives from other boards that go. Master Plan Steering Committee.
I'd be interested in doing that.
Okay. Open Space Ad hoc Committee.
Yeah, I don't think we've ever met while I've been on, so if somebody wants it, otherwise, I'm fine staying there.
Okay, we'll keep you there. Planning Board, I will keep. School Committee.
Yeah, I'd like to stay on that.
Stormwater Task Force.
Stay on that as well.
All right. Municipal Building Design Committee.
I'd like to stay on it, but I would like to transition about halfway through the year or toward the end of the year with another member, so that way we can have a handoff during my final year on this board.
Okay. Do we want to put two people down for that? Would members of the board be okay with sort of having two for this one?
Only one can be officially appointed, but the other could be like the gearing up.
Okay.
Are you interested?
I am interested.
Want me to take planning from you, then, because you're signing up for too much? Oh, no, I'm sorry. I can't tell you that. You're signing up for a lot of stuff. So do you want me to take planning liaison from you?
Sure. Yeah, that's fine. All right. Senior Tax Relief Group, is this still a thing?
That's completed.
No. Okay. And then Middle High School Civics Classes.
That was Lou and I. It's in the spring. We didn't do it this year. I like doing it.
Yeah, I mean, you and I had a meeting with students to talk about one of their civics projects. I think it was a lot of fun, so I would be more than happy to do this as well, if anyone else is interested. All right. So then it'll be me and Selectman Jeffries. All right, awesome. We just got them all assigned.
What's not on here is I am the liaison to the Board of Assessors, which I will continue, and I think the AGCOM asked for a liaison.
Oh, yes.
I like to do AGCOM.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up.
I like to do AGCOM.
Yes. Good idea. All right, thank you.
So that means I have AGCOM, planning, middle high school.
Library.
Library, municipal building design.
Mr. Chair, I have a question, if I may. This could just be showing my ignorance on the board here, but is there a reason why we don't have a liaison to every board and commission?
I can answer that, Mr. Chair, if you want.
Yeah, go ahead.
This has come up in the past. Yes. So not every, we've had years where some members didn't take any liaison duties. And so, you know, once you start signing up for six and seven, you really overstretch yourself. And so, you know, I think that we kind of resolved it by saying, you know, what are the, there are some of these that we have to be on, that we have a seat on. And then other liaison-type roles were requests, kind of like boards that can have a significant impact on the town, like school committee, planning board, you know, council of aging, and then some boards requested, like the library or AGCOM. So it's really just, I think it's hard, if you think about how many they are, to assign a liaison to all of this. And then it also works two ways, that if it's a board that we appoint, they have to report back to us every fall, anyway. They typically come before us in the spring for appointments, so we do interact more with the boards that we appoint, and we, you know, not, that's why they're largely excluded, because they're a little more in communication with them.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right. So we got them all assigned. Thank you very much. Moving on, what do we have next? Minutes, I don't believe there are any, right?
No.
Warrants, do we have warrants tonight?
Yes, they're, Mr. Chair, when she grabs them, I did reach out to the Ethics Commission, because I do have an immediate family member that is on staff, and I should, I need to recuse myself from signing any payroll warrants.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much for letting us know. Is this the whole thing now?
Just take the top.
All right. First...
Did you say you spoke with them, or you just...
I just, I emailed them, and I just got the guidance back today.
Oh, they said that you shouldn't...
If we had, if they were, yeah, if they were done by department, if the warrants were individual, I could just not sign off on that one, but because we do one signature, I can't sign off on. But because we do one signature, I can't sign off on it.
As it's not a policy, I just find it surprising that they would say that. It's, it's really administrative.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's their guidance.
I was also a little bit confused, but it's okay.
All right. Thank you for letting us know, though. Obviously very important to know. Uh, so up first, we have a bills payable in the amount of $54,268.28. While we're doing this, do we have any action items?
I do have one. It got brought up today, but I brought it up in the past too. Uh, it got brought up by somebody other than myself today, and that is, we have the authority, and we should use it, that any appointed body that we appoint should be required to record their meetings. They have to record their meetings. We have too many, you know, Historical Commission, APDC, anybody that we appoint that's not elected, we should mandate that they record their meetings in Zoom or some other way so that they are watchable and/or listenable by people in town. I, it's not difficult to do, the technology is available on anybody's phone at the last resort, but we should have enough, and that tied to the fact that we should have enough Zooms in the town to take care of those. We should also make a strong recommendation to any other body, and I don't know that they exist, but maybe they do, that any elected body or committees not formed by us, record all their, it should, I mean, we don't have the authority to do that, but we certainly have the ability to make a recommendation that they do. There is no reason why any public meeting is not viewable by anybody in the public once it's completed.
I have it written down. So I also just passed down for the warrants, a bills payable in the amount of $35,476.57, and an accounts payable in the amount of $1,302,605.45.
Is this last one payroll as well?
It is.
Okay.
Is there a reason why there's two signed sheets? Are these duplicates? It looks like it's the same cover sheet.
I didn't see that.
Okay, so I'll send it back to you.
This is also payroll.
This one's payroll too?
I want to add on, because it's aligned with what Mr. Alonso just said, the Zoom links aren't issue still.
No, this is payable.
Planning Board had an issue again last night with Zoom link, so I don't know if we don't have enough, but I've heard other commissions say that, um, they got kicked out of their Zoom because someone else was using the link.
Last night, there was an issue with, there was a mix-up with the Zoom links.
Okay. But they seem to have.
But they're, we have three Zoom accounts, so all three meetings last night should have been.
Can we get more?
That we added a third, and that seems to have solved the multiple meetings. We had two for a long time.
Do you happen to know off the top of your head how much it costs per license?
I think it was like a thousand dollars extra for the year.
A year, okay. Because they just should, I mean, we should know what the number is, you know, that we don't want to have things that we never will hit that maximum, but we also don't want to have people not being able to hold their meetings because they couldn't get a Zoom. I mean, that is, because it's hard enough, as we've talked about when we were talking about the budget task force, to get people on a day that they can do it, and when they get there and then all of a sudden, oh, we can't do it because we don't have a Zoom, that's.
That wasn't a, last night's issue was not.
No, no, I'm not saying last night. Last night sounded like a technical issue with something else, yes.
It seems like it happens most often with Planning Board. For whatever reason, it seems like it's usually a Planning Board meeting.
I also, I mean, again, and I have full respect for Chairman Brenner, so I say this carefully, but he, he kind of discarded the fact that, well, we say that if there are technical difficulties, we're still gonna have the meeting, and that is the way it should be. I mean, because I could foresee that there are gonna be times in the world where Zoom itself will be having a problem, and we can't not have meetings because we don't have Zoom for whatever reason. So, you know, I think we have to state clearly that, yeah, the meeting is in person, and we're doing Zoom as a courtesy, but there is a possibility that technically we may have a problem.
And that's what's on most agendas?
Right. Right, and it was, but it was noted by the Chair at the Planning Board, and, and he was quick to say, well, people just expect it, and I don't disagree with the fact that they expect it. I just, I guess my final, where I fall on it is that, well, you know, there are, anything with technology, there's going to be glitches. I've spent my whole career in technology, there's always glitches. But, you know, the town still has to go on and, and do things like that, so.
The one exception, sorry, to, to that is, so, there's gonna be, you know, instances like that, there's technological issues, but if there's a, say, hearing where the notice is that it's also, that needs to be delayed then and re-noticed.
Yep.
That includes also a remote participation as part of. So, there's certain hearings that would apply to, that you should not hold the hearing, and.
And that's.
Planning and ZDA would be.
Exactly, that's what I was gonna say. I think this is probably the reason why it happens to the Planning Board more frequently, and they don't have their meetings, because they have a lot of public hearings during their meetings, so.
But you seem to have Zoom issues frequently.
Yeah.
This spring, anyway.
Yeah.
And they could be all different, but it's all.
Last night, I think it had to do with the scheduling of a Capitol Planning and Planning Board at the same time.
At the same time, yeah.
I will also, I, because we're on the issue of still action items, and this is also related to that, I went to book the Capitol Planning Committee meeting, and we have to do the scheduling of these meetings a little bit easier, because you gotta, you gotta talk to somebody for the room, you gotta talk to somebody for the, another person for the Zoom and see if they're available. Then somebody has to start the Zoom. I had to call the Town Manager because my Zoom wasn't started at, at, five minutes after it was supposed to have been started. And so, it was like, just coordinating that, we, we need to have a one-stop shop of who coordinates and the meeting. So you should be able to say, I need a meeting, I'm looking for, what rooms are available? Like, that was, that's what happened too. I published the agenda for the lower conference room in the Ritter, which is what we usually do for Capitol Planning, and then I got told, no, you can't have that, because, and I had looked on the calendar for the town, and it's like, oh, the Board of Assessors had penciled it in. I'm like, well, how could I possibly have known that somebody penciled it in? So, it's like, we really need a process that streamlines scheduling of meetings. It's hard enough scheduling a meeting with members who have schedules of their own personal and, and their careers and their employment, but man, could be, could be easier.
Yeah, I think that's a very fair request.
Not a simple one, or it would have been already done.
I can, I can imagine, yeah, so.
I, I mean, I think, I hear what you're saying, Tom. I don't know if we have the mechanisms in place to effectively that. Maybe it's just a list of, hey, you gotta, you have to reach this person, and this person, and this person until we get to that point, but I hear you. It is complicated. I think everyone who, who, who steps into these roles, especially as Chair, I've received, I've heard a lot of comments about how complicated it is to get something scheduled, you know, where do you find the letterhead, you know, I mean, just the, the simple things. And it is multiple different people that you have to interact with, but I think that that, as how we're designed, I mean, that, you know, one person is responsible for facilities. You know, that person may be on the road, they may be doing inspections, they may not be able to adequately communicate to the person during the Zoom, and so the information may not be available. So I hear what you're saying, it should be, you know, what we do at work, you know, you go to one kind of website and schedule it, and, and it lets you know if there's a room available. You can do a lot of it through like Outlook or even Teams now, but here, until we get to that point technologically, I hear what you're saying.
Well, I'm not looking for, I'm not looking for, I, I just want to be fair, I'm not looking for self-serve. I'm not looking for that I should go on a website. All I'm saying is that we have a finite number of days in a week, we have a finite number of rooms, we have a finite number of Zoom meetings, that isn't all that, none of those things I just listed, even lists, maybe rooms are in the double digits. Otherwise, everything is in the single digits. And it's like, that should be very easy to get a mechanism in place that streamlines that. And even if somebody pencils something in, that it's a shared resource that says, okay, you know, hey, what's in the lower, what's in the Ritter lower building, or what's in the Town, Town Hall, and what's, you know, all these places, what's in the Wallace for the library? Well, the library is special because that's under a different account, so that's not really town officially, but, I mean, it just should be easier than it is, that's all I'm saying.
How are the rooms booked now?
So, usually through the Town Clerk's office when someone's scheduling a meeting. But there's different jurisdictions for different buildings, so the library is in, you know, the town, that's done through that jurisdiction. The School Committee is through that jurisdiction, so that's why I'm saying it's not as simple as it, it may appear it could be.
It might be worth at least looking into Outlook. I know that Concord uses Outlook to book rooms. I don't know how that gets set up, but maybe something that IT could look into, if that might be, you know, that would be an internal resource for people that have, but can at least go on and see what rooms are available. I know that doesn't solve all of the problems, but maybe that's something that we could look into.
I've also talked to the Facilities Director, because we switched to Master Library for platform for buildings, and that has a module for scheduling, so we'll look at that, but that doesn't solve the issue of getting a Zoom link. That's a separate person that has that capability to log in on the backend and see what all the meetings are scheduled, and to make sure there's not overbooking of Zoom accounts. And that's a security feature as well, so you don't want, you want a point of contact that has the ability to log in and see them. So, there's layers.
All right, any other action items?
I have one, um, one of the things that, that Selectman Alonso brought up earlier when we were doing interviews, I think that we should consider creating a policy or looking at how we do interviews, and if we're gonna, what the selection process is, you know, why we're picking to interview some appointments but not others, you know, whether there should be a streamlined process, and if we are gonna bring someone in for an interview, that we have interview questions, maybe we have a, a set, you know, list of questions, something so that we're not in a situation where we have someone that we requested an interview for. I think it would be nice to have a, a policy, and, and that we're not just sort of arbitrarily picking boards and commissions that we're interviewing. Just my thoughts on that last couple weeks.
Yeah, I hear you. I mean, I think the tradition at least is when we go through it as a board, if people want to ask people to come in for the interviews, you know, we sort of just have a process where one member of the board can request that, and we go with it, but in this case, we did, and someone showed up, and, you know, we didn't really interview them too much, but it's all right, it happens. I mean, did we ask someone to come in when maybe we didn't really need to? Yes, but I hear you.
We also took a while, and I hear you. I think all policies can be amended and changed. We took a while to amend the appointment policy, like, we had a couple goes on it, but it took us a while to do it, and I think that was like a settlement, basically. I mean, I remember as we were writing it, certain portions of it was like three to two in agreement to do it this way, and, and so we did kind of piece it together in a way that we weren't all fully in agreement on, uh, as we stepped it, but I think where we settled was that by a certain date, any member can request to interview anyone from a Board or Committee, and, and that you don't have to give a reason, but as, you know, Mr. Alonso asked tonight, I think maybe you should have to give a reason for why you want to interview one Board and not another, so that way it doesn't look like you're targeting an individual person, or making, you know, someone's life more difficult, being like, hey, you want to stay in this job, I, I got you, I want to make you show up, and then you don't, you know what I mean? So like, I think it, I think we may want to revisit that. I don't know if it's immediate and high pressing.
I think we're already sort of done it for this year, but it might be something to consider moving forward.
Targeting of people has happened in the past. We had one select person on the Board that constantly chose one person who they absolutely did not like, and every year made them re-interview. It was, it was ridiculous.
Yeah, well, we definitely want to avoid that, so. All right, moving on to Committee Reports.
Uh, School Committee met last week. They talked about the activity fee in the high school, had a lot of discussion about that, about making it more transparent, wanting to know where money goes and how it's used, so they're going to discuss it in more detail in the fall. Um, and they are working on planning a meeting with our delegation. Some of the topics that they have on their list to ask about are the bus bidding process, state funding, Chapter 70, revenue for millionaires, tax, and, yeah, those are the highlights. I think there's more, it's not scheduled yet, they're still working on calendars, but this summer, hopefully.
Capitol's Planning had a meeting last night. It was, we were meeting now in this time, which we don't usually do, at the request of other members of the Board, who at the beginning of the process in the fall, had wanted to address the wording in the Charter that said we should come up with a five-year Capitol Plan, so we discussed how we might do that, and then of course, given the changes in town government, and, and as we will be with an interim Town Manager within, you know, several weeks, there was the realism that I don't know how far this will get. There was also not any kind of agreement about what the purview and what the authority of the Capitol Planning Committee should be in this regard, except for a five-year Capitol Plan we did agree on. Also, the membership will change, so that, that, other committees, so I know Mr. Martin is not one, looking to be reappointed. He was our resident at large or member-at-large, and I was reappointed tonight, and then the rest of the Boards will, if they haven't already, I, I don't think, I don't think school has yet, has FinCom? No, so that FinCom hasn't either, so we don't know who the new membership's gonna be. And we need a new member in general, because George Martin will not be.
He won't get a new FinCom because he's on for three years.
Oh, wow, okay, well.
Capitol Planning is three years.
Right, but some people do step down anyway.
Do I just summarize what he said, since he's all the way over there for the people?
Well, he's, yeah, so, Mr. Passios, who's on the FinCom, says that the term is on for three years, but sometimes people resign from these things even though they have a term, so. Anyway, the next meeting will be in July, which we will do our reorganization, and then we will pick up from there.
Thank you. Oh, you don't have it.
I don't have it.
Selectman Jeffries?
No, I haven't either.
All right, so I went to the Council on Aging meeting this morning. It was a wonderful meeting. It was primarily a celebration for a member of the Board, Betty Di Giacomo, who served on the Board for 10 years, so it was thanking her for her service for 10 years on the Board. They discussed a, a whole bunch of things, and the things that I starred to bring up here are a couple of things. So obviously, we heard during public comment, the Council on Aging is interested in ARPA funds for, and to work on engineering plans for additional parking around the Adult Activity Center. And there were a few other personnel-related issues that they discussed as well, which, as a side note, I'm gonna point out, we don't have a Personnel Committee, so I'm not exactly sure how that would be managed at this point in time anyway, or if it even can be. But the things that they discussed were renaming the Director of Council on Aging, changing that title to be a little more reflective of what that role actually does, because that role, it's not really just the Director for the Council on Aging, they are overseeing the services that we provide to seniors in town. So they wanted to explore changing the title to be a little more reflective of that work that's done. Uh, let's see, what else do I have here? We also, we mentioned this earlier tonight as well, the Meal Site Manager, they discussed getting the hours back up on that role, and they also discussed changing the grade for the Outreach Coordinator from grade seven to grade eight, and their reasoning for it is because that role essentially is doing a tremendous amount of social work, and they believed that it would be more appropriate for a grade eight. So, just putting all that out there, that's what they were discussing today, at least the things that I thought were relevant for this meeting and for this Board, and that's pretty much it. All right, moving on to upcoming meetings. We are meeting June 17th, next Monday, for Executive Session only, and then Tuesday, June 18th. And we're gonna end with public comments. Are there any public comments from the Town Manager this evening?
Mr. Chair, before you, what time is the Executive Session?
Oh, great question. 6:30, yep.
And is it here?
It, yes.
In this meeting room? And can, we discuss the July meeting schedule, because we're starting.
Oh, sure, yeah, so the Town Manager is not gonna be here the week of 4th of July, is that correct? I don't think we should meet that week. Do you guys agree?
I won't be there either.
Okay.
I agree, taking it off. I think we did last year as well, and it's really helpful to staff.
What day is the 4th?
Thursday.
Thursday, I think, yeah.
So do we have to talk about the 2nd?
Yes.
Yes, it's the 2nd, yeah. All right, so we're all in agreement on that. Fantastic.
So our meeting schedule will be the 9th, sorry, 9th, 16th, and 23rd in July, so we can schedule out appointments.
Yeah. All right. I don't know what that noise is, but there's some feedback going on for people in the booth. Anyway, public comment, are there any public comments from the Town Manager?
None, thank you.
Is there any public comment from the public? Mr. Passios.
So good that you're back, Dave. I've really missed your presence.
For the time being, anyway. Dave Passios, 56 Whiting Street. Congratulations, a three-hour meeting, you're still going to beat the Finance Committee with its four-plus-hour meetings. Couple of comments. First of all, reaching out to other committee members, especially the appointed committees, I question how that outreach has, what outreach has actually been done, because if it's a simple, single email, then you're not going to get a response from a few of these people. They don't, they're not, as one member said the other night, I'm a 20th century guy, so Zoom and all this other stuff is, you know, foreign to me. So I think it's important that if an email goes out to a particular member of a committee, maybe the next step would be to reach out to the Chair of that committee. Obviously, tonight, one of them was a Chair that didn't respond. And then the final being maybe a phone call a day or two ahead if there's been no communication, because I think that is part of the problem with some of these people that don't show up for these appointing hearings. Just, just my thoughts is what I've heard from other members at other meetings. Not to harp on it, but to harp on it, this section in the Charter, I've read it 100 times since I was up here earlier in the meeting, and I really think there needs to be a legal interpretation of that sentence because I think you got it wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Passios. Are there any other public comments from the public? Mr. Bowen.
Thank you, Mr. Dzolow. How are you? Can you hear me? Okay.
Not really, you're going to have to speak up a little more.
Um, hold on a second, let me, let me fix something here. Just want to make sure that you can hear me clearly. Okay, is that a little bit better?
It's a little bit better, not much, but go ahead.
Okay, good. I just wanted to make a couple of different comments. We're clear, correct?
You're somehow less clear now.
I am less clear now, I know. Welcome to the fellow of technology of Lunenburg. No towers, no proper accent. Are we doing okay?
We can hear you a little bit, but it's not ideal. Go ahead.
Okay, all right, well, I'm going to try to get this across, just to make mention of a number of different things. I just wanted to mention, thank you, Mr. Passios, for all your attention in town with your board appointments, however, they are too numerous. Please think about running for an elected seat. I'll give you my vote. You do have a passion, and you have a passion that I share here in town, okay, and I support almost 90% of your direction. I just wanted to make that clear to Mr. Passios. Mr. McGrath also needs to show up for any appointment. Nobody should ever come for an appointment and never show up to a hearing before this board. Enough of more of the same people being appointed to boards or elected to boards using the statements as, I always care, I love Lunenburg, as prerequisites to their appointment without coming with ideas and/or plans. And I quote that emphatic. My other concern is, is what will the interim Town Manager be paid? If Julie Belvo stands in, should she be given a substantial pay increase? It's not only, if not only temporary, if she does assume these temporary positions. I'll, I'll just highlight an example. Asperham's Town Administrator has 5,900 residents in that town, he receives $163,000 a year. Compare that to us. Heather, I don't blame you for leaving. We're so far under that employee valuation, I am going to say good luck finding a qualified Town Manager for 12,000 people. Now for the cemetery. ARPA funds can pay for a consulting firm to review any of the needs that the cemetery has. A consulting firm through the Cemetery Association of Massachusetts would be $450 to have Mr. Daley come in and do a complete walkthrough and evaluation. A consultation firm to develop a cemetery corporation in town would only cost $3,500. And then, there is no conflict of interest as parroted by Nancy Fosse-Yasko of the cemetery, okay? The cemetery needs three union workers, okay? Nancy Fosse-Yasko's parroting out there's some conflict of interest. There are many people who are in positions of authority, who run or rule over different aspects of government, who are on boards of directors of schools and so forth, but they, as Mr. Jeffries did tonight, accused himself from a particular aspect of which he claimed that he, it will not be a vote because he can't, because of an influence problem or situation. So there is no ethics issue with regard to that. I just wanted to make clear of that. The cemetery also needs, like I said, three union workers, they have $60,000 of work. They're skilled and trained to work in the cemeteries, instead of the cemetery superintendent having to train.
Mr. Bowen, thank you for your public comment, but your three minutes has elapsed.
So I've been cut off for three minutes? Could I get a few, couple more minutes? I just have a couple more things to mention.
How much more time did you ask for? I didn't hear that.
I need about a minute and a half.
A minute and a half? There's always next week, Mr. Bowen, we'll be here. Thank you for your public comment.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Dzolow.
You're welcome. All right. Are there any public comments from the board this evening?
I have public comments. Mr. Chair, I have two comments tonight. So the first is that, you know, the Town Manager, as we all know, has announced her resignation. You know, I think that, you know, when employees give our community seven and a half years of their life, and, you know, working with Heather, I know it's been, you know, a lot of the time, 70, 80 hours a week. You know, I would encourage the public over the course of the next month and a half that, you know, if you, you know, many people have had an extraordinarily positive experience, and, you know, reach out and let Heather know, you know, this is, you know, it's a transitional time, but if you're thankful and appreciative, as I know many people are, it is helpful to express that as people move on in their careers to different decisions, so I just encourage the public to reach out over the next month and a half to express that thanks. And then the second comment tonight is, you know, at our meeting last week and in subsequent to that meeting, you know, I heard a lot of comments that went into what is, you know, the law as it relates to being a citizen soldier, so I wanted to just speak to that really briefly, that, you know, people who serve in the National Guard or Reserves are identified as being citizen soldiers, because our nation depends upon the specialties that often are in the civilian sector and that are called upon as needed into the, into the armed forces. And so, you know, federal law called U.S.A.R.A., what it identifies is that when a person is absent from their job for, in their, in the sense of absent from their civilian occupation due to military service, that the time that they're away counts as if they were still there, that there can be no sense of treating someone differently because they missed time due to service in the armed forces. Again, you know, based on federal law, it identifies that when that person returns or their return with all seniority and privileges as if they had never left. And so, you know, I think it's an important feature for citizen soldiers, knowing that citizen soldiers often have an unemployment rate that's twice as much as the average person typically is, that many organizations, it's easy to say I support veterans, but not as many people willing to hire a veteran, especially knowing that those veterans may need time off in the weekends, may need to leave for training for different parts of the year. So I just wanted to, you know, I know many people are not informed when it comes to that because unfortunately, we don't interact with many citizen soldiers in our day-to-day lives. But I just wanted to, again, comments that were made over the last week that I've heard from a couple of different people, I just wanted to address that publicly so that way as we move forward that we can show that level of respect to those individuals who put themselves in that position. And thank you, Mr. Chair.
Are there any other public comments from the board?
I do have one. I just wanted to say thank you to Dan Nadereski for his many years of service to the town. I know that that was posted on Facebook that he left, and I wish him all the best in his new role, and I think it's a tremendous loss to the town. He was a great asset, a great person to work with, and I think he'll be greatly missed.
Totally agree.
All right, any others? All right, with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, no. We are adjourned. It is 10:20 PM. Thank you, everyone who tuned in tonight, and we'll see you next week.